Good to go. Ah, the invitation.
I've already received this.
Showmanship.
Yep. Township Porcipony Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, March 13, 2012. Public invited, public participation. Meeting called to order, 7:30 PM. Please rise for a flag.
Mayor, would you?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vocal?
Mr. Carrifey.
Here.
Mr. Sisaro.
Here.
Mr. Di Piero.
Here.
Mr. Ferrara.
Here.
Mr. Stan.
Here. Others present: Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lynn Business Administrator, John Iglesina Esquire, Town Attorney Mary Solerzo, Acting Deputy Clerk.
Hey, Mayor.
Purpose of this meeting is set the agenda for regular Township Council meeting in March 20, 2012. Formal action may or may not be taken. Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with requirements of open public meetings law, film and notice in office. Township Clerk posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board in municipal building December 15, 2011, where it has remained posted since that date. Legal notice appeared both daily records, Star Ledger, forwarded to fax to local newspapers, local radio stations, December 19, 2011. Note: Council means are videotaped, aired on Cablevision, public access channel 21, 2 PM Sundays, available for viewing at www.porcipony.net.
Do you want me to take one to you?
Presentations, turf fields at the high schools.
Okay. Council President, thank you. I'd like to introduce from Chiron Cow, Brian Lawma, Civil Engineer, Michael Urban from Chiron Cow, Landscape Architect. Matt, I didn't get your last name.
Morella.
Matt Morella, he's the Acoustic Engineer. Trying to get my notes and my glasses in order here. I have met with several residents in regards to the turf field project, in regards to both Porcipony Hills High School and Porcipony High School. And they had some questions they asked me, and I, you know, I felt in transparency that these questions could be answered tonight by the three gentlemen that are here with us tonight. They forwarded me on questions, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pose some of the questions to you gentlemen as well, and I'm sure afterwards, after I pose those questions, members of the public would like to ask you questions as well. So, I'm just gonna throw the questions out there, so whoever wants to answer them can feel free. Trying to find the questions now.
Mike, grab the mic. Did you grab the mic?
All right. This is one of the questions that was sent to me by email. "How will noise concerns be addressed? Even kids just playing and whistles exceed the noise statute of New Jersey, 65D during the day, I believe. Any practices or games above and beyond what the high school already does will be a violation. So what studies have been or being done to address noise for residents?"
Well, we'll first talk about the statute which Porcipony participates in, that's the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP statute, which is applied at the receiving property line during the daytime hours at 65 DVA. After 10:00 PM before 7:00 AM, the statute gets lowered to 50 DVA. However, the DEP statute has several exemptions from it. National warning systems, aircraft, transportation noise, emergency generators, and the unamplified human voice. So the noise of the game itself is exempt from the noise regulation as it's unamplified. Now, if we talk about the PA system, if there's music amplified over the PA system, that's a different ball of wax. But the, the noise from just the game itself, including whistles and things like that, would be exempt from the code. As far as what studies we've done, we haven't as of yet. We'd be happy to talk about things that can be done to investigate what the potential sound levels would be. This time of year it's difficult to do, because the easiest way to do it would be to make a measurement at the property line of the noise levels during a football or a match.
Thank you. And this is a question that was posed to me, I guess, Brian, this will be for you. "Where will the drainage tanks be placed? I believe they need to be around 100,000 gallons for drainage, for turf drainage."
This project will not utilize drainage tanks. The stormwater management, as currently anticipated, will drain into a stone bed underneath the turf field, where it will be detained and infiltrate the large majority of the water. Some surplus overflow will be directed to the existing stormwater management system on the site. We will have to comply with all of the local and state regulations, which would require a reduction of flow from the site. So in proposed conditions, the flow from the site will be less than existing conditions.
Can we see copies of water studies done to address residents' concerns at both high schools? Also, we'd like the analysis from a Civil and Environmental Engineer on the overall impact of turf and also drainage studies.
Well, we will be preparing a stormwater management study that will be submitted to the town, as well as the Conservation District. Those studies are ongoing and haven't been completed yet.
How will parking be addressed at Porcipony Hills High School since the lot is so far from the field? Is there a traffic impact study that's been done?
A traffic impact study has not been completed. However, it's my understanding that the, the football use itself will not change, so I would not anticipate a change in the parking requirements for each event.
I'm just trying to pick these questions out, I know you would. Has there been any investigation of wetland boundaries, protections at the high school properties?
As all proposed improvements are proposed within the already developed field area, there have not been any wetlands investigations done for this project.
Why do both high school fields have tread marks and signs on boorings being done?
In the recent past, can't remember exactly, in the past several weeks, there have been geotechnical studies done at both sites.
Now, there's been a lot of questions asked of me, and I'm gonna try to answer as many I can tonight, but I'm putting them as directed questions for you gentlemen, and then some of the other questions I'll answer, and Jimmy Walsh, Director of Parks and Forestry. This was a question that was asked. "Does the installation company offer insurance if repairs are needed?"
Yes, the typical warranty period for these turf fields as a minimum is eight years, and again, that goes with our specification for the project.
"How will additional runoff be mitigated? How can we protect the adjacent residents from flooding? Can we see the analysis that has been done on drainage of wetlands?" It's a long question. "And in this case of the hills, the effect of runoff on erosion and lower practice fields and the school building itself? Has a wetland delineation been done?"
I think I've addressed the question regarding the stormwater management in the wetlands, but to reiterate, stormwater management is anticipated to be provided within a stone bed underneath the turf field, which will detain the water and reduce runoff from the site. Wetlands delineations have not been done, as all proposed improvements are within the developed area of the field. And I think there was one more that I, one more part of that question maybe that I've forgotten?
I think so, let me see.
Sorry.
Okay. Obviously no. Why is it not recorded in this case?
Oh, well, the, the proposed development is within the existing developed portions of the field.
All right. I'm gonna go down to some of the questions that were asked, and I will answer some, and the Director of Parks and Forestry will answer the other ones. "What assets, access will the general public lose to the tracks on weekends if fields are rented out by the town? Who will control the scheduling of rentals?" Well, we have no intentions of limiting the access to the tracks, and when it comes to permitting process, the Township of Porcipony Troy Hills will do the scheduling. What kind of partnership has been, will be developed between the Board of Education and the Town Council Administration has been developed? All terms and conditions with the shared, is a shared service agreement with the town and the Board of Education, and will be negotiated and presented to the public at an appropriate time. Who will get the income from the rental of the fields? The town, the Board of Ed? Well, since the town controls, as, as majority, 51% majority, we will do the scheduling. If the town rents it, the town will receive the rental, and I'm sure if the school rents it, the schools will receive the rental. But let me make this one clear. Most of the teams that will be used in these fields will be youth organizations, and they are exempt by ordinance from all fees. So they will not be charged, any of the youth organizations, Porcipony Youth Organizations will not be charged any fees.
Jimmy, this is, I guess, for you.
"What future projects or existing maintenance activities will be sacrificed if we spend our funds on bonding this project for 15 years?"
We won't be sacrificing any maintenance activities, because as we stand now, I think this year we didn't spend all of, all of the money that we had for open space, you know, slotted for the, the recreation side of it.
Okay, another one. "Can you compare these proposed fields with the fields at Veterans and Janarone Park? How many were funded exactly? When were they built? What are the maintenance costs? What additional machinery will be necessary?"
Well, Veterans and Janarone were built between 2003 and 2005, and I believe they were used, we used capital funding for those two projects. You know, the normal maintenance cost to do the turf fields right now for man-hours is about $1,500 to $2,000. That doesn't include equipment depreciation or fuel costs. You probably add another $1,500 a year for that. And we already own equipment to do the three turf fields that we have now, so we wouldn't have to purchase any additional equipment.
Before 2006, how was the open space trust funded? Funding used in respect to the turf fields? It was used for acquisition of open space, including debt service and down payment. And some of the open space has recreation and historical debt service attached to it. Has the Board of Education been advised that the easement conservation is permanent? They had quoted to us in their meeting that they believed it was a 25 years and could be reversed. What you told us it was permanent. From my understanding, that the easement has to be permanent, if I'm correct, Counselor, to perpetuity.
The Board of Education certainly knows that.
Board of Education is aware that the conservation easement would be a permanent easement.
And right now, if you would like to, Council President, open up questions to the public to the gentlemen that are here tonight.
Okay. Gonna open up to the public, you're gonna have, same thing, it's gonna be three minutes. At the end of the three minutes, you get to finish your sentence, and that's it. Thank you. If you'd like to come up, please come up, sign in.
I can't jump over.
We don't yell. We don't yell.
I'll throw him over for you.
As, you can see his condition, you have an advantage.
Yeah. All right. Sorry.
All right. My name is TJ Ritter, 72 Brooklawn Drive. I'm a licensed professional engineer, like you guys, I'm mechanical, not a civil, don't hold that against me. First question, exemptions for the NJDEP 6550 decibel thing? The unamplified noise, it's kinda like that whole thing going down, you know, Occupy Wall Street, where they say, you know, I say this, you say that, and everybody yells it out. What about whistles, air horns, and things of that nature? Is that part of it, or no?
Yes.
So whistles and air horns can be used?
I think that's unamplified.
A whistle's amplified.
A whistle is not amplified.
A whistle is not amplified. Is an air horn amplified?
No.
Okay.
Amplified meaning over the PA system.
Guys, guys, you know what? Can we give somebody else another microphone, so we have like a Rat Pack show here?
We have another one.
Do we have another one?
It is, it is, don't worry.
Okay.
I got you.
Don't worry, we got you. I mean, for you to just keep going like that, there you go.
Running live at the scene.
That the same thing too? I don't know if you wanna use the screen and then get answered, but otherwise we can.
Okay, I'll, I'll go with the questions, and then however you guys wanna deal them.
We'll let them talk.
All right, so we, we kinda said that, backing up, whistles and air horns apparently are not amplified, which I'll have to look into that myself. The drainage tanks, you said that the drainage tanks are gonna be located underneath the property there. Just out of question, I'm curious, I'm sure you use the rationale equation, what CIA values did you use for that, if you could kinda delve into that a bit? Parking, parking impact study's not been done yet, you don't believe that there'll be a change in parking. We can sidebar this later, I can tell you guys, there will be a huge impact in parking. If you look at Janarone Field, Smith Field, and Veterans, they, they set up a certain amount of parking spots there for a reason. Real quickly, Janarone has 267 parking spots for one football field and one softball field. There's 442 parking spots at Porcipony Hills High School for, for softball fields, I'm sorry, two softball fields, two baseball fields, a practice track, I'm sorry, the track, the football field, you know, and all this other stuff. Parking, you guys really need to pay more attention to that, that hasn't been done correctly. Wetlands, there are wetlands in my backyard, I wanna know if you guys have done the delineation on that. You say you're not gonna be impacting the existing footprint, but you will be if you guys wanna put two additional lanes, because the lanes will go on the outside, thus you'll have to move the bleachers and whatnot, and there are wetlands back there. I think it's a 50-foot buffer zone, it might be a 200-foot, and there might be salamanders back there too, so we'll have to look into that. I'm done, thanks.
With regard to the...
Do you wanna stay up here, or should I sit down?
Whatever.
It's up to you. I'll sit, I won't.
With regard to the stormwater, to say again, there will not be any drainage tanks. The drainage will be detained in the storm, in the stone bed beneath the turf field, so there will not be any tanks, just to be clear on that. They'll be in the voids within the stone, in the stone bed. With regard to parking, again, we haven't done any studies, but from what I understand, the football game will still be a football game. There won't be any change in the use, the use of the football, you know, as far as football games go, so each individual event will not change, I would imagine. Well, and then as far as the wetlands, the, the disturbed area of the developed field includes the fence and the adjacent graded area. It's not necessarily just the, the track surface itself, so even though we are increasing, or considering increasing the number of track lanes to eight lanes, it will still be within the developed portion of the existing track.
Did they answer all your questions?
I don't know.
What other question?
The, the parking there. Right over there, the parking.
Like, it's a mechanical versus civil. The, the parking, I mean, I'm, I'm just, real quick, the parking, I'm not talking about the football games, I'm talking about the use of the town using it. You know, I'm talking about like kids and parents coming there, having to walk from way over yonder to up to the fields. There's a reason why, if you go to Janarone and Smith, the parking are so close to the fields, it's because people don't walk that far. You haven't addressed that. Sorry.
Don't, don't worry. I gotta go and address you.
Well, one way I guess you could answer that question is the fact that we will not, I really don't believe, TJ, we're gonna have, when we have a soccer game or a youth, youth soccer game, you're gonna have the amount of fans coming, as you would in a high school football game. I, and, you know, we're considering doing a traffic impact study with our township engineer, traffic engineer as well.
Mary Prizicky, 273 Marcella Road. With the PA system, would it only be used during the football games, or will it be used during the soccer and the Little League Viking football games?
The township, when we permit the fields, no youth organization will be permitted to use an intercom system.
None?
None.
And what about if adult soccer teams?
Nope.
No one, just, just the school?
Just the high school.
Football team?
Right.
That'll be in writing?
Well, it'll be from the town side, now what the school does is different. I mean, that's, that's something to negotiate.
Well, now, just so that it is in writing, and it stays in writing, thank you.
Don't forget to possess your interest. It'll have to be else in writing.
Yes.
Yeah.
The school doesn't let them out anymore.
Well?
They get 49%.
Yeah, you're right. I suppose they're involved. Yeah.
Good evening. Don't typically read these things, but I figured tonight...
Can you please state your name, please?
Rick Nigera, I was gonna get to that. Who's, who asked me? Tell you straight up. Rick Nigera, 74 Brooklawn Drive.
Thank you.
As is true with all governing bodies, this Town Council, this Mayor, and this Board of Education are being subject to lobbying. Lobbying by special interests, including sports clubs, Little Vikings, booster clubs, and I fear even by their own legal counsel, who, as I understand it, stands to earn handsomely if this proposal's approved. I ask this Council to recognize this clandestine lobbying effort, the self-serving push by those that stand to benefit most, while cloaked in the disguise of community consensus, and I act in a manner that is, sorry, and to act in a manner that is consistent with true communities' interests, consisting of all your constituents, and not just these special interests. We, a small representation of your constituents in opposition to this proposal, have extended great efforts to have our voices heard, and to inform more of your voting public. We've called for full transparency, have opened documents, started a website, and organized community members. Through our efforts, the Mayor has granted us a platform to be heard in an invitation-only meeting. To that, Mayor Barbario, I thank you. But more time is needed to fully vet all our concerns. Today we stand here a mere four months after the proposal was made. These lobbying efforts for the Field of Dreams have had two years to convince you of their self-serving best-for-all agenda. But you have a fiduciary responsibility to hear all sides and to make the most appropriate decision for all your constituents. Since the, the process so far has all but proven to be already approved, and just a going through the motions to cover all bases, we, this small group, have secured legal action. Doing so will certainly not prove popular with you, nor with the special interests who have been well cloaked through this public process, but has proven to be of great interest to local, state, and national media, ones who, once we've officially announced our legal representation, have promised to cover the proceedings. I believe a more broad media scope focused on Porcipony will help ensure that the process proceeds more fairly, but admittedly, may have an adverse impact in our community. So as a proud member of this community, as a taxpayer, and as a neighbor, I ask you to thoroughly consider your ramifications of your actions, to ignore all the barrage of the special interests' spin, and to practice good government with all constituents in mind. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure. It was well-written, I can always...
I'm sorry?
It was well-written.
It was for you.
Thank you.
I, I, I have, I have a question, and this is not to, to parry any kind of, of responsibility or anything like that. If, and again, I wanna make sure I get the words correct here. If this council knew about Field of Dreams when it actually got presented, just the concept itself back in December, November, who was speaking with who for two years?
The opened documents that we've secured suggest that Mike Peterowitz, who I believe I'm pronouncing his name correctly, has had exchanges not only with board members, but also possibly with Board of Education.
This is the council?
I understand that.
Oh, okay.
I understand that, yes. As I understand it, and I could be wrong, and I'll let him come up, I'm sure he will to correct me.
I'll, I'll answer the question.
As I understand, there has been communication since February of 2010, at least in its initial setting.
There had, there's been discussions between myself, Mr. Peterowitz, members of recreation organizations in town, absolutely. And they, and those are, those emails could be opened, and I knew that from day one, yes we did. We were gonna form an advisory committee in regards to that. And the fact is, my door's open for anybody. And yesterday, came to my office, we discussed it, we, we had, I think, four meetings, I can't quite remember how many we had, and there's nothing to hide, and I, I think some members of the council did know that, we had meetings. And the fact of the matter is, I would, I, not, not to be disrespectful, but I would, like I said before, I would meet with anybody. I met with you as well. I heard the concerns of the residents near the high schools, and we're trying to find compromise, that was one of the reasons why we met. If there is compromise, I don't know if there is or isn't. But yes, absolutely, we met. I'll meet with any youth organization in town, I'll meet with any resident, that's my job.
My, my point for bringing it up is not to contest that you've done so, but to suggest that we have not had a chance to, I think, rebuttal the situation. We are, as I mentioned, a small group of us who are in opposition. We've all, we all surround this, this, this field, it's unprecedented to do this in a, in a residential area, as I understand it. I'm not happy about it, I made an investment. I'm very happy, and I say this to all the students that are in here, if your academic program needs this, I'm more than for it, I've even offered to raise my own taxes, I will do that. The investment in these students is an investment in my investment, but to open this up to everyone in town is an absolute horror for me, and it will bring down the value of my home, and I do, at this point, wanna consider leaving. And I'm, it's unfortunate, because I do enjoy being part of this community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good eve, good evening, Bob Crawford, 35 Hidden Glen Drive, Porcipony. First, let me start by saying I'm glad I was allowed into the building this evening. The fact that I was refused entry at a last public meeting suggests perhaps that there is a double standard in play at some point. Excuse me, may I finish? Mr. Mayor, Mr. King, may I please finish? Thank you. Go, go, go. Thank you very much. First question is, I'm still confused about the usage with regard to the fields. Who indeed, should the fields be turfed, be allowed to use the fields during the time in which the school's not using them? Who specifically?
Do you want us to answer now, or later?
No, no, I'd like you to ask the question.
The youth organizations in town will be using the fields.
I see. And from what time to what time?
Well, we're gonna be working that out in negotiations. As, as a school, we have to work out with negotiations what time the school's going to, say, they wanna use it till six, or seven, or to eight o'clock. The available usage, say they say to eight, we use it from eight to nine.
So, so, Mr. Barbario, then the fields will be used from nine o'clock, and you'll have 51% control of the field. So that tells me then that the fields will be used on Saturdays, probably on Sundays, during the summer when they're not used. Now, let's go back to parking. I wonder if this gentleman, have you been over to the fields to see the parking situations? Have you actually walked the fields and been to the parking lots?
Yeah.
You've been to the fields, but have you walked around the neighborhoods?
Do you use the microphone?
I'm sorry?
No, no.
I've not walked around the neighborhood.
Okay, so this is critical, if you're indeed providing input, here's the point. Indeed, if you've got fields open, let's say from 7:30, eight o'clock on a Saturday morning till 11 o'clock at night, it's not like a football game, it's 12 hours of continual traffic in and out, strangers in our neighborhood whom we don't know, so please factor that into the analysis, to suggest it's like a football game, which goes on for two hours, and is attended by people that we know is radically different from the truth. Let me ask this question. With regard to a conversation that the superintendent had with the public last Thursday, he declared the fields to be safe and usable, and would not make a statement with regards to the fact that they were unsafe and unusable. In your conversations with the superintendent, school district, have you confirmed that indeed the football field, the tracks, and the fences are safe and usable?
Well, in our conversation with, I haven't spoke to the superintendent, but, because I read your quote out of patch, in regards to what he said.
Yes.
Fact of the matter is, I don't think you need to be an engineer, I don't think you need, you can go look at those fields.
I have.
You don't need to be a rocket scientist.
Right.
They're deplorable, they have many ruts, they're compacted, there's issues there, big issues, Mr. Crawford.
Yeah.
Porcipony High School track, and remember you said an open space, made it in a good condition, well, you wanna have two, different set of eyes, because they're not in good condition whatsoever, but that's beside the point.
Mr. Barbario, can I continue?
The point, I'm gonna answer your question, the point is...
Please give me the... Thank you.
The point is, well, you're asking me the question, but the point is that the township interest is to have more available fields for our youth organizations. If this project goes, it's a great, I think it's great for the township. If it doesn't go, well, then it doesn't go. But the fact of the matter is this, they're, to me, I can go to those fields and tell you, they're deplorable, they're in bad shape.
Mr. Mayor, with...
And they can be played on, any field can be played on.
Mr. Mayor, with respect, your purview is the town, the superintendent's, and the Board of Education's are the fields. The superintendent, who is responsible for ensuring the safety of the fields, and responsible for ensuring that they can be used, has declared that indeed, they are safe and they can be used. The fact that you're rendering an opinion, which you do not have the right to render as an elected official, because this is school, district business, not yours, by default, By default, are you suggesting that Superintendent Sights is wrong when he declares the fields to be safe and usable?
I'm not suggesting that at all.
So what do you...
I was...
Can I say this, please? May I please finish? May I please finish?
You want to have dialogue, so this is the way it's been going.
I understand, but I'm trying to finish so I can have my dialogue. Superintendent has declared that the fields are safe and they're usable. That removes this need to go and turf both fields. It removes the need to go and redo both tracks, and it removes the need to go and fix the fences. I'm simply saying, the authority responsible for making that decision is the superintendent, and the superintendent has declared that the fields, the tracks, and the fences are safe and usable. Final question. What thought have you given to the impact on housing values in the neighborhoods that surround those fields? What analysis have you done? You were asked the question months ago.
Time.
And I answered the question months ago.
And what did you say?
I spoke to the tax assessor.
Uh-huh.
He says those types of studies are pretty much inconclusive. And I said, any resident from Brooklong Drive, from anywhere, can call our tax assessor up to get any type of information they needed in regards to the values of the property.
But I strongly suggest that you talk to real estate agents in this town who have a much better sense of what the market is and what the impact will be on our home values.
Obviously, you don't know our tax assessor then, so...
No, but I have been talking to real estate agents.
Okay, time's up.
The mayor continues the dialogue.
I know, time's up.
So let me just make one comment in regards to, when we set the meeting up with the residents from Brooklong Drive and Farron Drive, it was by invite only. And Mr. Crawford knew it was by invite only. And of course, he came to show up to make a, try to make a statement. If I wanted Mr. Crawford in that meeting, I would have invited you.
Mr. Barbario, several people at the end of the meeting were not invited by you. You opened the doors, everybody...
Bob, like I said, I would have invited you. And like, the fact of the matter is, I mean, we could sit here, and you and I can go out all night, because I'm sure we can. Fact of the matter is, you were the chairman of, we've talked about this, chairman of the builders and ground, you're on the board. You did nothing, Bob.
Thank you.
You did nothing.
Okay, next person, please.
And the fields are in the condition they are because you did nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Guys, guys, please, we got a lot of people here tonight. We got to get through all of them.
Hey, Tom, how are you?
All right. My name is Tom Blutch, 10 Wingate Road.
You get two and a half minutes to make up for the...
In sharp contrast, it is apparent to me that the Parsippany Field of Dreams project is embraced by honest, hard-working officials and volunteers in this town, who give their time and effort selfishly to the people and kids of Parsippany. This is not turning our high schools into public parks with crowds of thousands of people in traffic. Common sense, at least as a whole, tells me from statistics as well, that this is not going to, this is going to increase our property values. It is not quickly pushing something through in haste and taking complete control of our high school fields. It is a well-thought-out partnership between our town and Board of Education for the greater good of this community. Finally, something that will be done to our high school facilities after years and years of waiting for studies and committees resulting in continued neglect and failed attempts at real improvement. Through all of this, I want all of you to please realize, let's not miss what's at the heart and soul of the Field of Dreams project. Our nearly 7,400 young people, students, in this town and their families, whether they step onto those facilities during physical education classes, pep rallies, or at high school graduation, they will be positively impacted. If they participate in high school band, soccer, field hockey, track and field, cross-country, baseball, softball, or football, those student athletes and their families will be positively impacted. And yes, our expanding town youth sports programs here in Morris County's largest municipality, the Parsippany Soccer Club, Little Vikings, the PAL, all with hard-working, dedicated volunteers will finally have some breathing room when needed. My message here is simple. There are other concerns being heard and addressed relative to your decision on the Field of Dreams. I ask you to please, please, make these young people and their family the basis of that decision. Thank you.
Okay, for the remainder, could you please refrain from clapping both ways, please? Thank you.
Those two boys can go stand in the corner.
My name's Michael Spahoe. I live at 80 Brooklong Drive. At the previous town council meeting, I questioned whether the township attorney, Mr. Inglesino, had advised the people working behind the scenes on the Field of Dreams project, and expressed my concern that this is a conflict of interest, because he is now advising you, as a town council, that what he coached them to do is legal and valid, and he is telling you that you should vote to approve on his decisions. Mr. Inglesino's response was that he represents the town and that the town is his only client. He never denied, however, doing work for the Field of Dreams people behind the website. If he has done work for them, this would be a conflict for everyone he is advising on this matter, which includes every one of you sitting up there right now. Through the Oprah documents, I discovered it started in December of 2010. I'm going to start June 11th, 2011. John and Steve, excellent work on the research, analysis, and report of your findings. The report is clear and well-written. Based on the proposed structure and transactions required, I agree that we should convene an initial meeting of the following people. Mayor Barbario, Frank Nuglia, Jim Walz, John Inglesino, Jasmine Lim, Jill Plusha, Mike Peterowitz, and Steve Pearlman. This is from Mr. Peterowitz, written to John Inglesino, J.C. Seen, the mayor, and the other members. The document itself, memorandum titled "County Improvement Authority Option for Financing Turf Fields", is six pages long, entirely redacted. Kind of question how attorney-client privilege applies to a private citizen, unless Mr. Peterowitz is actually considered a client of our township attorney. We go to November 2008. We are set for our meeting on Thursday, December 1st, at 5:30 p.m. at the municipal building.
2008? I'm sorry, '08?
December 1st at 5:30 p.m.
2008.
No, this is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, November 28th, 2011.
Got you. No problem. I'm sorry.
I'm slightly dyslexic.
No problem. Just keep going. Don't worry.
Thanks for your feedback on the website. Changes to the content and layout will be made tonight. Once we have John's sections, we will build them into the website, and we should be ready. Frank is working on the Rec Advisory Committee, goes on and on. So he's basically thanking John for his work on the Field of Dreams website. The last one I'll mention is dated December 12th, 2011. Again, from Mike Peterowitz, private citizen, from my understanding, unless you've authorized him as a client of our attorney, I'd like to know why some of these are redacted, but here we go. One question by Mr. Plusha, who to say owns the website and controls it, people are asking. He says, again, Mike Peterowitz to Jill Plusha, Jasmine Lim, J.C. Seen, Mayor Barbario, and John Inglesino, I would suggest the following. Friends of Parsippany Field of Dreams Recreation Advisory Committee. First was Friends of Parsippany Field of Dreams, two Recreation Advisory Committee. Then he says, I don't want me or anyone else to be publicly identified as owning or operating the website, and it shouldn't be attached to the mayor's office. I could go on and on with hundreds of papers like this showing that, four meetings?
Time's up.
It's more like four emails a day that we're talking about.
Okay, guys, finish. You have a few more seconds? Couple more seconds, I interrupted you.
Mr. Barbario, or Mayor Barbario, said that there was something like four meetings, right? We're talking about emails all day long. I would request that Minister Inglesino take the bill away from billing the city for the work he did to Mr. Peterowitz, and bill Mr. Peterowitz for that work instead. Or perhaps we, as the opposition, should send a bill to you for our work, since he was paid to counsel them on the Field of Dreams website.
Well, mister, I don't recall your name, but let me set the record straight on some of your very misguided and bizarre allegations as it relates to me. First of all, I don't think you recited any email in which I was from me, okay?
It's redacted. They're all redacted.
Secondly, I do not represent Mr. Peterowitz. Never met Mr. Peterowitz before until this particular issue came up. I never, ever provided any content for the Field of Dreams website. I've never been paid by the Field of Dreams. I have nothing to do with the Field of Dreams. When the Field of Dreams project was originally broached with the mayor, the central question that arose was, to what extent could the township use Open Space Trust Fund money to finance the project? And actually, the first question that came up was, how could the project be financed? And there were a couple of different views, ideas that were discussed. One was the possibility of using the Morris County Improvement Authority, which was an idea that was looked into. Then the question became whether or not the township could use Open Space Trust Fund monies legally in order to finance the project. That was the issue that was being bantered about in the various emails that you recite. We did work on that. I was directed by the mayor to do work on that. I did work on that. That work culminated in a 17-page memorandum of law, which is posted on the township website, which is available to you, to opposition folks, to folks in favor of the project. I wasn't asked to come to a preconceived conclusion. I was asked to look at the issue and to analyze it in a legal, scholarly kind of a way, and we did that. I'm very proud of the work that my office and I did. And, you know, I'm happy to answer questions about it. But all discussions, all discussions, and all topics of conversation that I had with anyone concerning this subject really had to do with that one issue on behalf of the township.
Next week.
Look...
All right, next one, please come up. Sure, you had your time. Next person, please come up.
I'm sorry. Next week.
Hi, my name is Bob Farvanish. I live at 6 Inwood Road.
Don't worry.
Got a short thing I'd like to read here. I moved to Parsippany in 19...
Or take it out. Take it out.
Or lift it, because a lot of people have been bending down.
There you go. Go ahead.
I'll start again? Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Start, go.
I moved to Parsippany in 1965, lived in my house ever since then. And I've served on two boards in this town, actually was president of one of the boards. I have four children who are educated in this town. They graduated from the hills. And during that time, they had grass fields. They didn't have any lights. Now, the games are pretty good. And don't misunderstand me. I am for the kids. I think children should get the best they can possibly afford. I really believe that, okay, because they're our future. But I'm speaking here today as a taxpaying citizen, and I'm concerned about your diverting funds earmarked for the open space to the Board of Education facility. I can see that you've already found a way to do it, and it's probably a moot point. But in these hard times of budgetary constraints, isn't there a better way to spend these funds, rather than buying astroturf and lights? If the council's willing to use open space money, then maybe we really don't need it. Perhaps there's a more pressing need for funds. Maybe we can find a more creative way to get more teachers, or better books, or more computers, or improve the classroom facilities. Perhaps, you know, with money being, you know, really tight, what about all the relief for Lake Persippany, Lake Hiawatha people? Or people who have lost their jobs, or faced foreclosure, can't pay their taxes? Maybe we should spend more open space money and stop all the building? Now, time is not an honor friend in this matter. We have two autonomous bodies in Parsippany, municipal government and the Board of Education. Both are supposed to be at arm's length. The Board of Education and council have separate budgets. Why are we co-mingling funds responsibilities? To my knowledge, the only time that the council gets involved the Board of Education budget in funding is if the people vote the budget down. They act as a third party to examine the budget. It is the responsibility of the Board of Education to determine their needs and get funding through their legitimate source and mechanism. They have surplus funds and reserves. That being said, it's hard for me to understand why the council and mayor are even involved in this matter coming up with creative ways to divert taxpayer funds earmarked for open space to the Field of Dreams project. Why would a governing body do this? The council uses the open space funds and then assumes major responsibility of fields. What are the long-term consequences? Respect the maintenance, replacement in 10 years, or if the Board of Education needs more money? You want to partner with the Board of Education to finance the project? Perhaps you could work with them and solicit contributions for businesses in the town for donations to improve the fields. It appears that other towns have been successful in getting businesses involved, and in return, they get little placards saying, "We built this field." Has the Board of Education come to the mayor and the council...
30 seconds, sir.
...and asked to fund this project? Is this project in the most pressing need for use of open space funds? Has the council looked at the long-term ramifications of procedure and the presence of this marriage with the Board of Education? Who will replace the fields in the future? The council does divert funds earmarked for open space to the project outside of the scope of responsibility. How do you ethically justify this action? Why is the council and mayor even addressing this issue when it's a Board of Education responsibility? Ask you that question.
I just want to answer the one question about the Open Space Trust Fund. And the misconception that I continue to hear that Open Space Trust money is not intended for recreation is definitely a, it's not true.
No, that's not my point.
But I want to, I'll let you finish, and I...
He is done.
I'm just trying to, you know...
Sir, you're done, so...
The 1988, the ordinance, and I'll state...
You can stay there.
The sole purpose of the property within the township, Persippany Troy Hills, for active and passive recreation only. When you get to the state statute on open space trust dollars, the acquisition of lands for recreation and conservation purposes, the development of lands acquired for recreation and conservation purposes, the maintenance of lands acquired for recreation and conservation purposes. So to say that we cannot use open space trust money, and we've done it, we have. In the past, you know, we have debt service against it now. In 1999, we used open space trust money for a down payment on Veterans Memorial, $225,000. And then the following year, in 2000, we used another $225,000. So to say that we cannot use open space trust dollars for recreation is not, it's not true.
That's not my point.
We can.
Just one...
And to be creative, I know you keep saying, these hard economic times, budget constraints. Well, that's when you come out with stuff like this. Because the economy dictates, we have to do things outside the box. We have a 2% cap. I need to really, you know, clarify. And then, I understand.
That's what I went to my...
And the fact of the matter is, and let's just, let's take it from 1994 all the way to 2010. The town, they used to get a lot more state A than I get since 2010. In fact, I think 14% of the budget, or a certain percentage, 14, maybe a little bit less, 13% was the average, that the state would give A to the township. Well, in 2010, it's only 7% now, and it keeps going down and dwindling. So we have to find creative ways to do the projects we need to do in the future.
I understand. Just one second. Go ahead. My point is, you guys are supposed to be arms-length. You have the Board of Education, and you have the municipal government. You're supposed to be like this. You're not supposed to be like that. That's my point, okay?
Well, you know...
That is my point.
That's how it used to be.
It's still that way.
No, well, if you listen to what the governor says and what the state says, they're encouraging towns to share services. They're encouraging towns to share services with their Board of Educations to save tax dollars. And that's exactly what we would do here. Fact of the matter is, though, there's some pending issues that we have to wait for in regards to the Attorney General.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sure it. Pat Patacha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. I really don't need a response. I just came up here for confirmation. Some things that were said. There have been many people who have looked at those Oprah requests. There are many redactions out there. Anything that had the attorney's name on it was redacted. I don't care what anybody says, otherwise I've seen it, okay? And as far as getting in touch and being in touch with the townspeople that it would affect, nobody from Wall Avenue or Hawkins Avenue were called by the mayor, and they are very much affected by this. And when I did come that night, because I was expecting my area was contacted, I was not allowed in. And then I got a message on my cell phone saying, this is the mayor. Pat, the doors are unlocked. Come back in. You and Bob, come back in. I mean, you know, we are residents. We are taxpayers. We are concerned citizens. It's not as though we come in here to destroy you. We come in here with good questions and good ideas, and you don't give anybody the chance to do anything about it, or being told it's this, it's that. You know, we can say whatever. You're reading the new statute, the state statute, what you're reading about recreation and conservation. That is not on our ordinances to date, to date. This is the ordinance you will be changing. Those wordings are coming from the 1997 state statute.
Exactly, and the 1988 town ordinance.
Right, okay. Our '89 ordinance, in nowhere does it say recreation. On the ordinance, it does not. I've looked at that ordinance. It does not say it on the ordinance itself. That word is not there.
Does it say it, though, Pat? It does say it, though.
No, it does not. It says in... No, it does not. It says improvements and renovations, nothing else. It does not say it.
You're talking about the 2006.
I'm talking about the '89 says the same thing. It does not say passive recreation on the ordinance, okay? Yeah, read it, please. The 2006 ordinance.
As far as we designate it solely for the purchase of property within the township of Precipiny Troy Hills for active and passive recreation.
What are you reading? May I see it?
I spoke to the former mayor.
May I see that?
In regards to that, I spoke to Frank Prepeora. I asked him what his intentions were. He said the intentions were for recreation.
That wording is not on the ordinance. I have the ordinance that was...
It is.
It is not. Excuse me, please. I am not, you know, being obnoxious here. I am telling you what we have in writing, what we see. I have the ordinance, I have the 2006 referendum. I have it all. It is not out there saying anything about passive recreation on the ordinance. On the ordinance itself, it does not state it. You have, and these are things I was going to say to you later.
Pat, 30 seconds.
You have bonding and debt service, which was never okayed by the taxpayers. The bonding's on the ordinance, but never went to a referendum, never got voted on. Debt services, now you're trying to pick up here, and that's a big issue, and that needs to be voted on. Thank you.
Hey, Pat. Hey, Pat. I'll make a deal with you. You want to come meet me in my office? Bring the residents from Wall Avenue, Hawkins. It's up to you.
Mike.
Absolutely.
Come on.
Well, I can't have a private meeting in my office, Mary.
Did you sign in? Go ahead. If you don't know me by now, my name is Mike Pedowitz. I live at 480 Park Road, and it's no secret that I'm a supporter of this project. I'm not going to get into the point, counterpoint of a fear and smear campaign. We've always done everything, and we presented to this council in a very positive, hopefully constructive way, and that's what I intend to do tonight. There's been a lot of energy and excitement about this proposed plan. There are over 1,200 people in this township who have signed petitions of support. The fields are a town asset. They're used by township adults and children for sports, club activities, jogging and walking. There is no disagreement in this room among anybody here that those facilities are in horrible shape. Grass doesn't grow, rocks and goose feces are everywhere, the tracks have potholes that are lifting, the fences are broken and rusted, the lights at the par high are old. The photos that these children have in their hands don't lie. The fields get used 12 to 15 times a year, and taxpayers spend thousands, tens of thousands of dollars trying to maintain them. And then we spend thousands of dollars busing our kids in high school to other town fields when the town fields are rendered unusable. For many, many years, the Board of Education, the residents of this town have tried to find a way to repair our fields. We were unsuccessful. A renewed energy by a large group of people finding a creative idea has spawned what we have here tonight. The town council already has voter approval for this project. The town council has used open space dollars for similar projects. In 1988...
Quiet in the background, please. Thank you.
In 1988, the ordinance approved for active and passive recreation. The 2006 referendum dedicated a portion of current taxes to build, fix, and maintain parks and facilities. The town council and the Board of Ed have already successfully executed shared service agreements like at Par Hills at the tennis courts. For years, the town council has used open space funds to build and maintain parks like Vets Field and Janarone Field. In today's tough economic times, our leaders have been challenged and mandated to find creative ways to fund shared services projects. And I will say in summary, it has been said that it takes a community to ensure the well-being of our children and society. The Field of Dreams is an investment in our community, our children, ourselves, and the future of Precipiny. Our community assets at each high school have deteriorated before our eyes, and the time is now for us to move forward with creative shared service opportunities. Other communities in Precipiny have coexisted and enjoyed the benefits of modern, safe parks and facilities near their homes and their neighborhoods, and those parks have lights. The Fields of Dream is an investment in the future of Precipiny. It will enhance our property values. It will continue to build pride, and it will provide us all with a valuable asset, and it will require no new taxes. Thank you very much.
Well, as usual, we have an issue...
Name and address, please.
Ray Vigano, 16 Whitewood Drive. As usual, we have an issue here that stirs up a lot of controversy, differences of opinion. One of the things, and I have not followed this from the very first, day one, but it seems to me that there's been a very convoluted explanation of why we need this, how we're going to get it, and who should be involved, and why you should be involved. I happen to be a civil engineer. I did go to the fields with a neighbor the day after it rained continually, the morning after. There are some low spots on the fields, okay? Clean, screened fill would solve the problem. If the Board of Education has let the condition of the turf deteriorate, that can be remedied. The crowning of the fields could be improved somewhat. Some fool went on the field and dumped dirt with two to three-inch rocks on it. That can be removed. I don't know who was responsible for that. The stand seemed in very good condition. The track at the Hills is in excellent condition. The track at the high is a little older. Perhaps it can be resurfaced. You want to add two lanes because you don't have enough capacity? Run another heat, okay? That's what they do in all sporting complexes and contests, okay? The money for this, that seems to be the big issue. If the town is so flush and fat with funding, why don't you use the money that you have in the utility surplus where you milked us with excess fees?
That'll be another issue.
Okay, why doesn't the Board of Education use some of its reserve? This belongs to the Board of Education. If the fields are in, in need of maintenance, it is their responsibility. If the real objective is to provide fields for cronies in the sporting programs in this town, and we have a board member, a board member, okay, who's intimately involved with that, and you know who I'm talking about, if that's what's really driving this, then be upfront and tell us. Don't, don't make excuses and fallacies to try to justify this thing. The Board of Education did that with their superintendent, and you saw what happened to them, okay? This issue is really one of the kinds of things that divides the town. If you have so much money, I'm sure you can find other things to do with it.
30 seconds, sir.
Thank you.
You have time.
The bottom line is that this will install, incur, it caused the town to incur additional fees. You're bonding this thing, 15-year bond. That's all the money you're coming up with, is for some interest. Somebody's got to pay for this in the future. In 12 years, they have to be replaced, from my understanding. That's before the bond even becomes due. So somebody's going to have to refinance this again. You are just looking and grasping at straws to justify something, to placate some buddies in your club. Thank you.
Mr. Vigano? Mr. Vigano, I'd like to respond. First and foremost, the members of these recreation organizations are dedicated loyal volunteers, number one, and I consider them my friends. I consider a lot of people here my friends. Those are against it as well. But to sit there and call them cronies for the time and amount they put in to the recreation facilities, for the recreation they do for our children in town, that's an insult. The members right here, I know most of them, they dedicated their lives to this community. They dedicated their lives to the children in this community, and for you to sit there and call them cronies, I think that's disrespectful. But that being said, you know, you come out and you make, you know, this crony, that crony, that's wrong, Mr. Vigano. And that's, that's what's divisive, and that's what divides. Those type of comments divide. Now, I met with the proponents against it. I met with those in favor of it, and I'm going to continue to do that. And that's what you should do, but when you sit there and you say, "These individuals are cronies," that's wrong.
The cronies I'm referring to are on the Board of Education.
That's still wrong. That's still wrong.
I was a coach in the...
That's what divides. That's what divides.
I was a coach in the Precipiny soccer club. I have four children who went through the schools and the athletic programs. I know what volunteers are. I know what they do. That's not my criticism. That's not the issue. I'm talking about the fallacious way you're trying to go around justifying this.
I disagree with you, sir.
Chris Joyce, 54, Springview Drive. I've been involved in Little Vikings for 12 years, I think. I was vice president and president. I am now gone. I don't really care anything about if the Little Vikings are not going to use that field. My son went through four years of playing high school football.
Actually, you do care. You have a sticker on.
I do care. Well, about Little Vikings, I'm not a crony, okay?
No, he made sure he corrected himself.
Well, he asked us to be upfront.
Yeah. You guys are volunteers who put a lot, and I know a lot of you guys here put a lot of good time to the kids, and thank you.
I just spent four hours on Sunday cutting down sticker bushes around the fences for the baseball field, raking, the bullpen mound, cleaning up a lot of stuff. It's a mess up there, and for people to come up here and say it's not, is they're lying to you, or they're trying to back someone into a corner. It's insane, some of the things I'm hearing. He asked us to be upfront. What I'm asking them is for all the people who are, you know, saying, "Oh, it's not open space. You shouldn't be..." They should come up and say, "I don't want it to happen because I live there." Just say it then. If you want, if you want us to be upfront, you should be upfront, too. Only one, only one gentleman came up here asking about Property Valley, but they all live right around it. This whole group of people, for the most part, are people who live around the fields. All I want, the reason I'm for this project is because these kids, these high school kids deserve more than we are giving them. They deserve it. I mean, it's, it's a joke up there. We had to clean up everything just for the field to be respectable. I was embarrassed. I felt, when I went there in August to the Hills football field, it looked like it had been abandoned, and I am not exaggerating, okay? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, please, we have a lot of people here tonight. Please, we got to get through them.
My name is Tara Ann St. Angelo, and I'm with the law firm of Gregory &amp; Reed, and I represent a group of concerned citizens known as Precipiny Unite.
Oh, I had a case with your firm.
Uh-oh. Should I get someone else to?
No.
I hope what's come across here tonight is not a desire to deny the kids of Precipiny great athletic facilities. I hope what's come across to the council is a desire for proper planning and transparency. And so with that, I really only have one question. Do you intend to have a full planning board review of this matter?
Well, let me, I'm sorry, your name again?
Tara Ann St. Angelo.
Well, Ms. St. Angelo, first of all, you know there's well-settled law on that question. And secondly, I'd appreciate if you could provide me with a list of who your clients are, so that we may have that information. There is also law that in, in public meetings, when people are represented by council, that their counsel should be the one who speaks for them. So if you, if you're representing a client, we, you don't have to do it right now, but, but after the meeting, if you would provide me with a list of who your clients are, appreciate that.
Oh, I can provide you with a list, and I was just retained today, which is why this is the first time you're seeing me.
But to the extent that some of your clients have spoken here tonight, the way public meetings work under the law is those folks should not have spoken if they are represented by council. I'm sure you know that.
Right. I have to compile a list of who is actually a member of the group and who is not a member of the group.
I just, you know, there's certain legal protocols that we probably should be following, so if your clients are speaking...
No one that has...
I don't want, I don't want to answer one. I don't want to answer, because me being an attorney, I don't want to answer one of your clients when I should be speaking to you.
Right, I understand, and I...
Or actually, my attorney.
I will compile a list of who is actually in the group officially known as Precipiny Unite. And actually, what I wanted to bring to the council's attention is there is litigation pending currently in Morris County about the very question of whether athletic facility-type applications go before the planning board or before the Board of Education. And it's turned into a pretty long and arduous legal battle that has really denied the kids of the town use, use of their field. And so I hope that, Mr. Inglesino, you would invite conversation about the law that's out there.
I certainly welcome, I certainly welcome your opinion letter on the subject. I can tell you off the top of my head that the law is very well-settled, that municipalities do not need to undergo any planning board approval or site plan approval for municipal projects. I've litigated that issue in Morris County, and I'm sure there's no issue as to what the status of the law is on that. But to the extent that you feel that this project would require site plan approval by the planning board, I welcome your written legal opinion on it.
Right. And currently, it's an issue of what's the definition of a school facility?
Well, this is not a...
And I don't want to litigate the issue with you now. I'd rather write on...
Again, this, the concept here is that the, the project would be utilized 51% by the municipality, and under the current structure, would be funded through municipal open space trust funds. So again, I don't see a need for site plan approval, but I would certainly welcome, you know, your written legal opinion on it, and I'd be happy to take a look at it and respond to it.
Okay, thank you.
Arthur Hendrickson, 65, Leemore Drive. One of the previous speakers said the fields were in deplorable condition. He was cleaning brush and weeds. Is not that the responsibility of the Board of Education to maintain their fields? They seem to have plenty of money to pay exorbitant salaries to the superintendent. They seem to have plenty of money to give the teachers a 4% raise one year, compounded with a 4% raise the following year, compounded with a 4% raise the following year, yet they have not paid attention to the children's facility, and they have let it degrade? I think the Board of Education has abrogated its responsibility, responsibility that we, taxpayers, have given them facilities and trusted them to maintain. They maintain the schools. They should maintain these facilities. I think this is the wrong use of the money because we have already paid the Board of Education to maintain these facilities. Thank you.
My name is Bob Venezia. I live at 102 Brook Lawn Drive. On March 2, I sent a letter to New Jersey Attorney General Jeff Chiesa requesting that he prohibit the Board of Education from entering into partnership with the town on the Field of Dreams project. The letter contains a summary of the major problems that I see associated with the project. Tonight, I would like to express the exact same concerns to you. In no order of importance, they are as follows. Number one, the partnership between the Board of Education and the, and the town on the Field of Dreams project has provided the board with a means of circumventing the 2% budget cap. $4.5 million in open space money will now be used to purchase items that the Board of Education would otherwise be unable to fund. Constrained by the 2% cap, the Board of Education has already allocated the maximum amount allowable for the upcoming year's budget, but by selling a 51% interest in two Board of Education pieces of property to the town, it will be able to use the $4.5 million to purchase the turf fields, tracks, and lights. Funding the project from an account belonging to the off-budget Open Space Trust Fund is the only way that the board can build the Field of Dreams project while maintaining its existing capped budget. Number two, instead of using a conservation easement to preserve the parcels of land being purchased, the town is doing the exact opposite. Covering 200,000 square feet of what is now grass with an asphalt base and a plastic rug surface makes a mockery of what this type of easement was intended to be. a mockery of what this type of easement was intended for and might be illegal. Three, the township of Parsippany has a history of attempting to circumvent rules and regulations in order to accomplish its goals. The most recent example is our Board of Education's attempt to avoid the state cap on the superintendent's pay by redoing our superintendent's contract eight months before it was due to expire. I believe that the Field of Dreams is another example of the town's willingness to bend the rules and will result in additional reprimands from the state. Four, the parcels of land involved in this project are adjacent to Parsippany High School and Parsippany Hills High School. That is, they are school grounds. At the completion of this land transfer, high school students in Parsippany will have access to their own school fields only 49% of the time. Such an arrangement is not in the best interest of the students. Number five, the proposed agreement between the town and the Board of Education is permanent and irrevocable. If the board decides at a later date that the agreement is not benefiting the schools as anticipated, they have no recourse. In that event, it will be the students who will suffer, and the effects will be permanent. Number six, the town's 51% usage of the fields is earmarked for public use. A good part of that time, it will be governed by town-issued permits. However, when the permits are not in effect, anyone can use them. Allowing unregulated use of school grounds also does not seem to be in the best interest of the students. Number seven, as I mentioned earlier, open...
Mr. Venezia, I'm sorry. Your time is up.
No problem. Absolutely no problem.
I have one quick question for you. Just reading your thing. In addition, in order to move forward, the Parsippany Town Council and its attorney had to resort to questionable tactics, hastily drawing up ordinances. Could you explain that a little bit, considering this council hasn't...
That would...
Just wondering how we were involved whatsoever.
Well, that's what's coming up next week, when you're overturning, I'm considering you're, the ordinance that you're...
Have we...
That's next week's ordinance, which I believe you're overturning the terms of the 2006...
But this was dated March 2, 2012, which kind of would make your comment...
What do you mean?
False. This is dated March 2, 2012.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I'm just asking. Did you have some comments that the council had done?
I knew at that time you were trying, you were trying to overturn it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number seven.
Hi. My name is Pat Venezia. I also live at 102 Brook Lawn Drive, and I'm going to continue to read the list that my husband started.
Is there any more of you here? No, I'm kidding.
Any more from the Venezia family?
This is it. Seven, as we mentioned earlier, open space funds will be used to fund the Field of Dreams project. The project was debated at a meeting of Parsippany's Open Space Committee, and approval was denied. The township attorney then declared that the Open Space Committee was merely an advisory board, and that the town was under no obligation to follow its recommendations. Technically, he's right. However, the town's behavior regarding this matter seems somewhat suspicious because, to the best of our knowledge, they've never before overruled a recommendation coming from the Open Space Committee. Eight, because of fund usage limitations placed on the Open Space Trust Fund by a 2006 referendum approved by Parsippany voters, the project cannot be paid for in cash. As a result, the town then proposed to use bonding to fund the project. During public discussions about the project, the town has come to realize that, A, the proposed bonding for the Field of Dreams project may have legal issues, and B, over the last five years, they've been spending every dollar of the $600,000 open space allocation for capital improvements and maintenance. Therefore, there's really nothing left to support the bonding. To circumvent these problems, the town has drafted an ordinance, which will in effect nullify the 2006 open space referendum approved by the voters. You are scheduled to vote on this new ordinance next week. It will remove the current spending restrictions defined in the referendum. For example, the $600,000 limitation on maintenance projects will disappear. Once passed, the entire fund, including the $5.4 million currently reserved for acquisitions, could be used as the council sees fit, not as the voters have specified in the referendum. The new ordinance will also allow the balance of the entire fund to be used as collateral for bonding without the approval of the voters. In essence, in order to fund the Field of Dreams project, in our opinion, the town has found it necessary to unilaterally repeal a township-approved referendum. Nine, during the public discussion about the Field of Dreams project, another open space trust fund issue arose. Prior to 2003...
Thirty seconds.
Residents were assessed at a rate that provided an annual amount of about half a million dollars to the fund. In 2003, homes were reevaluated, but the town did not adjust the open space tax formula to compensate for the tripling in home values. As a result, in 2003, the Open Space Trust Fund tripled to $1.5 million annually. The township has been collecting an extra $1 million each year since then, and has been using this windfall to pay for items that would normally have to come out of the regular budget. At the time that this stealth tax went into effect, voter approval was neither sought nor obtained, which may be in violation of New Jersey 40:12-15.8. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question of order. Is this the only chance for public speaking tonight, or is this just about the turf field?
Yes, it's just about the turf field.
Okay. So if I have a question about a few ordinance...
Later on.
Perfect. Thank you. In regards to the project for the turf field, it's been brought up in other meetings about the slope and the three feet as it being difference. And just as a point of order, the, I don't know if that's the right wording, I'm sorry, the maximum lateral slope by National Federation of High School specifications is 2%. The width between the two outside lanes is 273 feet. If you take the three divided by 273, basic geometry math, that's a slope of 1.1%. So there is no issue with the par high track of the three-feet difference from one side to the other. That seemed to be like we had to do a whole bunch of regrading and stuff like that. And also this issue with two eight-lane tracks for sanctioning events. New Jersey State Interscholastic Association, Athletic Association, does sanctioning events on six-lane and eight-lane events. And the track championship, for many years, have been on six, I mean, there's six-lane rules and eight-lane rules. And I'm not sure why we need two lanes when we could easily, if, say we need one, I don't see the point why we have to, you know, go through the expense of creating two brand-new eight lanes. As opposed to the sharing of the fields of 51-49%. It's a simple question, but would these lands be considered parks or Board of Ed fields? If I can have that answer?
Well, it's an interesting question. You always ask very good questions, Mr. McNulty. The term "parks," which does appear in the 2006 referendum, is not defined anywhere in your ordinances. So why the term "parks"? If you read my memo, you would know. We raised a question. Why was the term "parks" used in the referendum? I don't know.
It's my timing.
But the...
No, no, go ahead.
The term recreation is used, recreation facilities is used, and parks is included within that definition. So a park is a recreational facility by definition under your ordinances. But when you go back to the original enabling ballot question back in 1988, the question was to acquire, was to use open space funds, to create the open space trust fund, to acquire lands for active and passive recreational purposes. So when you read the original referendum and the definition of recreation, parks is, in my opinion, I think is the only logical conclusion that you can come to, intended to mean a recreational facility.
In more of a straight answer, it'll be township-owned or Board of Ed-run?
The land itself will be, title will not change under the current thinking. The title to the property would be in the Board of Education. So if you run a title search, you know, that's what you would find. But there would be a conservation easement that would also appear in the title in favor of the township. And then, of course, you know, there would be the 51-49 split of usage.
With that being said, I'm going to take the answer, and you can disagree or argue with me, that it will be run under the Parks and Forestry Department based on the 51% easement, and it won't be under the Board of Ed rules, which are based on, I'm not sure what rules those are.
The time, and again, a lot of these issues are to be still worked out as part of a shared services agreement. And frankly, these are very good questions, and you have more of these types of questions. You can email me, and I will email you back, because...
They won't be rejected?
These are questions that we need to, we need to continue to consider. But in my mind at the moment, and you're a little bit down the road, but in my mind at the moment is that the rules regulating the field would be subject to the township rules while the township is operating it, subject to the Board of Ed rules while the Board of Ed is operating it. But there may be some issues, such as amplification, loudspeakers and so forth, that we may want to specify in the shared services agreement together. As the mayor said, for, you know, township programs, there wouldn't be PA systems. Well, maybe that's an issue that we would want to include in the shared services agreement that would regulate both the Board of Ed and the township. I'm just using that as an example of an issue where you may have a joint decision to regulate a particular issue.
Okay. With the, with the thought that it being a park, when it's not under Board of Ed ownership, will the park be closed from November to April?
Do me a favor. Just ask your two questions.
Will I need a permit to use the track during, from November 1 until April, such as I would need a permit to go on to any Parsippany-owned park that I do today? If you've noticed all the new signs around town, every single park is closed from November until April 1. And, well, the unused, this is more back to the shared services, will the unused, when no permit is issued, portion of the fields go under the Board of Ed portion or the town-use portion?
Thank you.
Just clarify one thing, Mr. McNulty. You're absolutely correct. It's not state-sanctioned that you have to have an eight-lane track. I called up the, same thing you said, Interscholastic. I spoke to a Dan Banzer from the state, and he said that, no, you don't have to have eight-lane tracks. You can have a six-lane track and still have a sanctioned event as well. And, you know, I'm considering, you know, if we do go forward with this of reducing it down to six lanes, because the, you know, just for the two lanes alone in each high school field, just to build the two lanes, it's $248,000 per field. So if we stick with the six lane, is this, am I correct, just to resurface it, we would reduce the bonding by $500,000. So thank you for bringing that up.
Any answer on the permitting issue from November to April?
Well, I'll speak to the Recreation Superintendent and Jimmy Walsh in regards to it. One of the reasons why we don't have permit use during that time is because of liability purposes, but I'm looking into that more. I got your email from Charlotte, my secretary, and, no, actually, I will talk to you about that tomorrow because I have some different thoughts.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead. I saw Jerry getting up himself.
Jerry Manning, Rainbow Lakes. I don't have naturally any kids in the school. I never did have. I'm a transplant from Long Island, back in the 80s with AT&amp;T. However, listening to the banter that went on here tonight, yes, there are times when the taxes are affected for young people's activities. In my day, when I was that age, my parents had to pay separately for any activity I took part in. That has changed. Took me a while to agree with that, but I do. When they proposed Janneroon Park, which happens to be on a piece of green acres that abuts Rainbow Lakes, I had some second thoughts that the current mayor and I went at it about. And guess what? I'm happy with the way it turned out. My fears were covered, and they did what they said they were going to do. Now, listening to what went on here tonight, throwing words around like special interest, in a town of 53,000 people, there are 53,000 special interests in this town. So I don't know what the hell that's supposed to mean. As far as parking, if there isn't a problem with the parking today, why would it change tomorrow? We're not adding fields. We're just cleaning them up and making them more usable. Hello? Housing values, why would that change? The fields are going to be there whether your house is there or not. The least costly part of this project is the turf, is the carpet itself. The least costly. I know people who were involved in the Dover field, and the carpet is the cheapest part of the whole operation. Once you get the bed down, yes, the carpet will wear out over time with wear, but it's the cheapest part, so don't worry about it. But listening to some of the objections tonight, my question is, if you buy a house by a school, you've got to expect students and activity. Hello? Is that a surprise to anybody? It's like people who buy a house by it next to a train track and don't expect to hear train whistles. Or somebody buys a house by a river and doesn't expect water. Hello? People, you have to wake up. And if all of these problems that were brought up tonight are a problem, thank God in a representative republic like we live in, you have freedom of movement. If you don't like it, move.
You know, all of us, well, first let me say, my name is Jeff Caffey. I live at Two Ivy Lane, which is about a couple of blocks from Parsippany High School. I've lived there for 41 years. This gentleman has said, when we moved in, we knew there was a high school there. We liked the high school. We liked the track. But from what I understand on this project, we are changing the entire neighborhood around. I believe we're adding extra soccer fields there. We were talking, we are not adding extra soccer fields.
I'll let you finish, and I'll... It's just going to be the same thing that's there now, football fields.
Nothing addition?
It'll be an all-purpose field. That's it. But we're not adding another field. Just one.
Okay. Not at all purpose. Right now, we use those fields and facilities about nine to 12 times a year, where we have the lights on and we have the facilities. This is what we've lived in, in this neighborhood for years. There's no reason we would object to this if it wasn't changed. I'm a realtor. So I know it will impact the real estate situation. I have been there, and I've had enough clients. We've sold literally scores of houses in the neighborhood. We've welcomed people in, and we've helped people move out. But nobody, I mean, a tax assessor certainly can't tell me that if the neighborhood changes and our streets become very heavy with traffic, and the parking situation in the neighborhood becomes, we might not even be able to get into our own driveways, that it won't impact our pockets. Right now, my main concern is housing values have fallen over the last three or four years dramatically. I don't want the situation, and I know it only entails the people in the neighborhood, maybe 500, 600 people, and the whole township is a lot more than that, but a lot of us have lived there for a long time, and all of a sudden, if our neighborhood radically changes, it will definitely, you know, will affect the value. Clients coming in, the first question they ask, what type of neighborhood is this? I see there's a school and a track there. And I say, that's actually very good for the neighborhood.
32nd.
Okay. Oh, anyway, thank you. I wanted to really know how many days a year that we will be having a different situation there. Will it be nine to 12, or are we looking at a couple of hundred days of heavy activity?
That's fair. In regards to, we were talking about it, Mr. Caffey, right? Is that what you said?
Yes.
In regards to, we're going to, the traffic concerns and parking concerns, we're going to address. Actually, I know there's certain areas, one on, I think it's on Farron or Rockaway Place near Hidden Glen, where, you know, I brought the chief of police there, maybe we're going to close that area off, where you don't walk through anymore, nobody can go that way. So we've been researching the areas over there on Farron, on Hidden Glen, and all of that. But that being said, there will be more activity, there's no doubt about that. I mean, I would be disingenuous.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up.
I would be disingenuous to tell you there wouldn't be more, because once a township, if the township has the available, availability to use it, yes, it would increase. But that's why we're looking at a curfew of 9:00 o'clock on those fields as well. And we're trying, we're going to see if we can, I don't know if we can do this or not, there'll be no scheduled games for Sundays. And on Saturdays, we're looking at, but I have to see if we make the 51%. On Saturdays, there would be no play past 6:00 o'clock. So we're working on those things to see if we can do them to address the needs in the areas.
I'm still, but I'm usually not for having a very loud voice.
He can remove it. He can remove it. You can remove it.
My name is Gail Alba. Thank you. I live on 69 Brook Lawn, and I appreciate everyone's well-informed opinions and information. Mine is very personal. My house is exactly across from the path going into the hills. And now, very few games, but during the football, and during fireworks, and during graduation, I am pretty much locked into my house. I mean, you block off one side of the street, they put signs, you can't park there. So if I'm going to have any kind of party, I have to be very cognizant of the things that you're having, so I don't have an, you know, conflict. But often, people come and drop their children off, and they just park there. I can't get out. I call the police, and I can only see this becoming an absolute nightmare. You say you're going to address it. I'm also a realer. I deal in commercial properties, I've developed properties. I know what I need to go through when I'm developing a parcel, and I can't get it through because the residents don't like what I plan on doing. I know it's different coming from the town perspective, but if you make it so that no one can park on the street, then I'm now hindered because I have no parking.
Right.
You know, so there's a lot of issues that I have that I know I'm going to have to address. And I just don't think it's fair that we're told they're going to be addressed without giving us how that's going to happen.
Well, that's something that, if we do a traffic impact study with our traffic engineer in town, and our, like I said, I've been speaking with the chief of police, we've been in the neighborhood, and he's going to give me some recommendations, so.
Well, I can tell you from experiencing it now for like 10 years, Brook Lawn Drive, when there is a game going on, forget 4th of July or graduation, it bottlenecks. It literally bottlenecks. And if you had to get an ambulance down there, or if I had to get out, and I have small children, it's not happening. So, I mean, something is going to have to come up very concrete that's going to eliminate this.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Hank.
I probably don't have to do that, I could do this. No, maybe, but no. Hi, my name is Hank Barbrak. I live at 23 Farron Drive. I probably should read it. I can go extemporaneously, but I'll probably miss something. I'd just like to redact a few things. There's been reference to, not redact, but just bring up, reference to the Farron Drive Jagged Rock site, Parsoni High School, is in no way near, as far as other parks or fields or facilities that are lit. The proximity of the homes at Parsoni High School Field is right there. And if any of you have been there, that's the situation. We have had lights there for, I can't remember, 30 years. They were donated by Mr. Cadella. I don't remember how it was done. They were on, his son played on the high school fifteen, with my son-in-law and my son, and all of a sudden, the lights were there. We heard something about it, but fine. It's not a problem. It's 30 nights a year. I can't imagine this going on 200, 250, 300 nights a year. The mayor mentioned four or six nights a year that, games and what have you, and then 40 times for 10 years. Well, there are more than just high school games, mayor. I live there. They have, they've had fundraisers, cancer drives, fine, they've had them all night, that's maybe once in the last two years. That's not a problem, we can live with that. I can live with the band. I love the band. But when they do some of their early-season stuff, it gets to be a little touchy, anyway. But it's enjoyable. The people over at Brook Lawn, they don't know what lights are like. They really don't. And this is, this is really troubling for them. Again, if it's minimal, it's doable. The traffic, you mentioned a traffic study. At a football night game, people do park on Jagged Rock Road, and they walk through. Well, last September, I wanted to go to a game. My wife and I always go to the game. And I liked, the gate was locked. I said, I'll be damned. The gate, if you were thin, you can get through the gate, but not me. I said, they locked this gate just for me. I can't believe this. So anyway, I found out, I thought it was because they didn't have somebody there to collect the money. That wasn't the case. I gladly pay the money. It was because the school board decided that the entranceway was unsafe. And at night, even with the light coming down, it was unsafe. So that's kind of interesting. Now, I would say, well, if we close the gates at dusk, after the school kids can go back and forth to school from the area, we maybe do away with the traffic problem. Because what I fear, every night, I mean, I know, I know parents of soccer kids, they love to get their kids to games on time and look out, and they're going to park, and they're going to flood that street, and there's going to be all kinds of situations. We say we hope not, we're going to study, but we don't know. And this is what we want to know. We want to know what's going to happen.
30 seconds.
So, I think that's probably what I would have said, but thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Sims. I live at One Banghard Place in Parsoni, Mount Tabor. I just, I'm just coming here tonight to reiterate to you that those of us in support of the Field of Dreams, or the Fields, the Turfing of the Fields, regardless of what our backgrounds are, I'm a lifetime resident of Parsoni. Got married and raised my kids here, and put all my kids through school here. Some of us feel that there's a good benefit to the community at large to do this field. You have to work out whether it's a proper use of open space money. You know, I have my own questions on open space money. I question why we spend, you know, why we can spend $500,000 on a great facility in Parsoni like Craftsman Farms in one year, and then we're debating whether we can spend money on a field in our town for the youth, and even adult youth in Parsoni. I think that many people are afraid of things they don't know, and I think we need to provide, you need to provide more information about what's going to happen with the use of the field, what the 51 to 49% means, because I believe that the school will get as much use of that field as they need, and the 51% can be achieved very easily by township, without having to use it 300 days a year, and without having to use it every night of the week, through the winter and through the summer. In addition to that, there are statements that are being made that are not necessarily accurate, and I'd just like to question for the engineers that are here today, and that is, in the Turfing of the Field, a point was made earlier that they needed to be paved over and a piece of plastic put on top of them. I've coached kids on turf fields, and that's not my understanding of the turf field. So no one goes home here tonight with the thinking that this is going to be the old-fashioned AstroTurf that used to be on Giant Stadium, we're down in the Houston Astrodome. The new turf fields, I'd like to be clarified on actually how that works. Thank you.
Mr. Sims, you made some very good points, and I'll reiterate what you said in regards to open space trust money. I think the idea of the open space trust money, me personally, is that it can be used, like I said, for recreation, and for historical, and for conservation, and for acquisition. I think it has something there for everything. And I think that was the anticipated purpose when the state, 1997 state statute. So you make a very good point. And I think another good point you made tonight is the fact that, yes, of course, when I went to college, was the regular turf field was like a macadam. It's not like that any longer. And I think if the engineer can describe how that surface is structured, and what is done, and how water runs in, you know, I think that'd be great.
Sure, I can help answer that question. Once the stone subbase is placed for the drainage, there's going to be a series of pipes that's going to take the water, and it's going to store all the water underneath the field during a rain event. On top of that stone, you have a, what they call, basically, it's called a carpet. And the carpet has these long filaments based on the type of activity that you're going to use, and they're made of a polypropylene, they're basically a thread. And they lay that down, and then on top of that, they brush in a fine silica sand that helps keep the weight down, lets the water go through. And then, once that is placed, then they come back in with a rubber, cryogenic rubber and sand infill on top of that, that brings it up to the proper level for a playing field, and again, allows the water to go through.
No pavement?
There is no pavement underneath that, no.
By now, it is well-known that I am a big supporter of the Field of Dreams. I support the concept, the scope as it's presented, and the proposed funding. Contrary to what is being said in regards to the original concept and the supporters of the Fields of Dreams, the reality is this. A citizen had an idea. He presented his idea to the mayor. The mayor was intrigued and felt it was something that should be researched further, and he started the research process. To imply anything otherwise is just wrong. We have hundreds of volunteer coaches in various sports organizations across the town. They are put in hours upon hours of their own time to help these kids mature into high school athletes. So when somebody asks the question, why did the sports organizations want to see this go through so badly, the answer is simple. Because they have put in their time and energy to help these kids succeed when they get to high school. The town has provided our youth organizations with some of the nicest facilities in the county. Why shouldn't the town help provide the same facilities at our schools? After all, we are still one town. Our fields are an embarrassment, not only to the schools, but to the entire town. In regards to this being considered open space, consider this. On a daily basis, more than, over 2,000 students per day will be using these fields, whether it's for gym class, sports, graduation ceremonies, et cetera. That is more use in a single day than any other of our parks that were funded by open space. In addition, these fields will still be available for our entire community. It will be a true community asset. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dina Segro-Noguera. I am a resident on Brook Lawn Drive, 74 Brook Lawn Drive, to be exact. And I believe the genesis of this project stemmed from unsafe, poor fields at the high schools primarily. And I'm wondering why there weren't a lot more people at the Board of Ed meeting a few weeks ago, when they discussed exactly the budget in which your fields would be cured? And how is it that the mayor has to be the one to bail out the Board of Ed? That's what I want to know. So, aside from that, I think that you have a great idea. Kids deserve the best fields possible. I was a sports lover, I played my whole life. I will tell you something. When this is in the back of your yards, and you can't sleep at night because the lights are shining in, then tell me how you feel about that.
It's okay.
Ma'am, please address the council.
Yeah, ma'am. You got to trust the council.
Well, I apologize. That being said, I think that it's a great idea, you want to take it to Route 80, we'll be all for it.
Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me. Sir, in the back? If there's anything that needs to be said, you got three minutes, please. We just, I'm saying this only because we have a lot of people here tonight, and a lot of people want to talk. So, the more we interrupt, the more time we're, you know, not going to be able to utilize the meeting. So, please.
Hey, John, how you doing?
Hi. My name is John Buccherelli. Live at 18 Leonard Way. I'm not a good speaker. I am, I guess, a crony, since I get locked into this because I'm the president of Park Troy Lily Geese. However, baseball has nothing to do with these turfing these fields. The main representation I have is...
My, the, the main representation I have is seeing the beautiful town fields, as, as we were talking before, that the town gives to our children, and we work very hard as volunteers, 80, 100 hours a week, just on volunteering to help the kids. And then having to tell my son, "Well, this is the field you play on now, next year you're going to have to go play on those fields, and you get muddy, and wet, and disgusting", and have to practice on the parking lot because the fields are too wet and they can't practice. Or have to get bussed over to Janarone or Smith Field because the fields are too wet to practice. And the other thing that people miss is that these fields are, are town fields, and right now, they can only be used by the football teams, because these fields can't take the abuse of multi, multi kids playing on them. So, if I have, I have a daughter, she's 10 years old, she's looking to play field hockey or soccer when she grows up. That's great for her, but she can't use these fields, she won't be allowed. She'll have to play on one of the off fields, basically the outfield of the, of the high school, uh, uh, baseball field. That's not right. The fields have to be, they, they, that's not right to have no, no stands there for the parents and the, or the grandparents to go see the games. So it's not just about football fields. It's not just about a, a bunch of, you know, cronies saying, "We want these fields, take them over for ourselves." That's, that couldn't be further than, furthest from the truth. That's all I had. Thank you.
Seeing no one else come further, I'd like to close the open session on this topic. Quick question for you, you were saying the turf field, what's that?
What?
Yes, yep, yes. You were saying there's an eight-year warranty on the carpet itself?
It's a standard warranty.
Okay.
That's a standard warranty.
I know it's tough to give an answer. How long's it, what's the norm? You know, does it last eight years? Does it last, or it just depends how?
It's all depend on the use.
The use, okay.
Well, the, the type of use that we're looking to use it for, what would be an estimate of how long it would last?
If there is one.
Well, Jim, how long did, uh, veterans, before the actual storm actually took it out, and that was still going strong after 10 years?
That was put in in 2003, so this is 2011 when Hurricane Irene ruined it. That's eight years, and, and we didn't have any problems with it beforehand. So I would say at least 10 years with the proper maintenance, if not more.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Can I just, because I know you're talking about replacing the turf, because I think the misnomer here is that, is it working here? I think the misnomer is that when you, when, we're going to, conservative estimate, $4.5 million for these fields, that of course, yeah, from uses, the carpets are going to have to be replaced, and that costs for the vicinity about $300,000, I think, for one carpet. That's wear and tear. You're not going to be spending another $4.5 million. It's like when you purchase a house for $500,000, over time, what happens? Your roof might go, well, you have to repair your roof, you're not going to spend another $500,000, and I think that's one of the concerns I hear from residents, that, "Oh wow, well, we're spending $4.5 million, we might have to do that again." Well, no, we don't. Once the infrastructure's down, it's just maintaining it, and you know what? To be honest with you, if the high school fields weren't maintained, yeah, we probably wouldn't be sitting here today. I'm proud of Jimmy Walsh, the way he maintains our fields here in town. Does a wonderful job by maintaining our fields. Why? Because we know the liability that comes with it. We know that if we don't maintain these fields, they get dilapidated, they get deplorable, and in the long run, you're going to be spending more money if you don't address it. And this is the situation you have here right now. It benefits the town in several ways, and I've explained that already. The fact of the matter is, we're not, we can't move, well, we could do certain things, but we really have to get the opinion from the Attorney General on what we can do, and we have to have a shared service agreement with the Board of Education, and that, all that's going to be addressed, and that's something, you know, we're going to start in the process with the Board of Ed, we're going to, the Township Attorney, I know, will be contacting them sometime tomorrow or the next day. The fact of the matter is this: These are our assets. You know, the most significant, I'm going to read something that I wrote today. "The most significant challenge in facing local government is the need to provide the services we always have, but in an economical way. We cannot afford to continue to raise taxes," and I've said that. "Our state aid has been reduced, and our energy tax money has been diverted for state use." State aid, and, and the reason why I say this, because I don't, if you have a better understanding of this, you can understand why we need to share services more, not just with the Board of Education, but with other communities as well. "State aid and energy dollars were implemented to reduce local property taxes, because the state reduced our state aid and diverted our energy money for state use. The demands on local government has changed as well. Services are expected with the least amount of tax increases. The town needed to think outside the box and find a creative way to do projects without raising taxes. In 2010, the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills lost $1.2 million in state aid. When you lose that amount of money, that's a 3.4% tax levy increase. In 2011, the state put a mandated 2% count on budgets, and the state has not brought up our state aid where, where they were in 2009 before I became mayor. This has made it very difficult to be able to do projects of this sort. We need to look into sharing services, not just with other towns, but our own Board of Education, so we can keep our taxes low. The state legislators have encouraged towns and the Board of Ed to work together to keep these taxes low. The township interest is to increase the number of playing fields available for use by our residents and youth organizations, and more importantly, to fund this project without raising any new taxes. By doing this, we have to be creative." So I, I kind of get insulted when I hear we're trying to backdoor, do this and that. We're not trying to backdoor anybody whatsoever, and that becomes frustrating, because once you, when you, when I, when I, I guess what I'm hearing at times is, raise taxes, let the Board of Ed do it and raise taxes. Well, that's where we intersect. It's exactly where we intersect. Taxes get up, they raise, we don't want that any longer, so we find a creative way. The fact that the money, open space money, is not just used, like I said before, for recreation, it's also used for historical buildings. It's used for conservation and acquisition. 41% of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills is open space, and we're going to be purchasing a property, Baldwin, uh, Baldwin Manor, Baldwin House over here in Precipiny Troy Hills, which I'm very proud that we're going to purchase, has significant historical value to the township. But I could tell you this, a lot of residents came up to me and said, "What a waste of money." I didn't agree with them. But you see, no matter how you do this, no matter what you do, someone's going to be against or for the project one way or the other. But today, what I heard is kind of, kind of disturbed me, because no one's here, there's no cronies, and I know what you're talking about, Mr. Biggano, but the bottom line is this: We need to communicate, and we're communicating, I've, I've said I'd bring this open to the public, and I have. Now eventually, you're going to have it where it's going to be the Township Council and the Board of Education are going to have to go public. This is the public process, and this is what we do, and this is what we should do. I said I would do this, and when I do it, I still get reprimanded for it. Well, that's just, I guess, being mayor, that's what it is, you become a, who can stump the mayor today type of thing. Fact of the matter is, times are changing. We have a cap, and it's not going to get any better, it's going to get more, it's going to get tighter. I commend the governor for keeping budgets tight, because you know what? I never thought that we would have the ability to stay within a 2% cap because of all the needs of our Township President, but we did it. But we did it with sacrifice. And this is why, when you do what we do here, by using the open space trust fund money, and I heard today, why didn't we lower the, um, the open space tax? Well, in 2003, the mayor then should have did it. That's when it should have been done. That's when the property values were reassessed. Now you have all these dollars attached to the open space trust fund, that if you do reduce it, you're going to have to go collect those monies, better pay through debt service through raising tax dollars. That's a fact, and that's what will happen. In regards to the amending of the ordinance, the amending of the ordinance isn't to circumvent to find ways. The amending of that ordinance, and if I may, I don't know if I've been at other meetings, and I've said it in my closed-door meeting, that fact is, we've been using open space tax dollars for debt service for the last, since 1999, 2001, 2000, 2001, 2007, no, 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011. Now, if we don't amend the ordinance, then we will not be able to use those dollars for debt service. I really don't feel confident with the, with the referendum of 2006. Okay, that's one of the, if this does not go, this does not go, turf field, I'm sorry guys, if it doesn't go, this ordinance still needs to be amended, needs to be addressed. Because the fact of the matter is, we have, we pay debt service, if I'm correct, on some historical properties, Craftsman's Farm, on recreation facilities, well, that won't happen any longer. And then those, then those pieces of property will become deplorable, and then we'll have to raise tax dollars to upkeep them as well. That is why, when I looked those, that ordinance over, I read the 1988 ordinance, the 1997 state statute, and the 2006 referendum, and you know what? It wasn't clear to me if we can use those dollars to pay debt service. But I do, I did know one thing, that if we couldn't do that, then we're going to have to raise tax dollars to get that money to pay the debt service. So anyway, what I do like about tonight, and democracy, democracy is, is wonderful thing, because the cornerstone of democracy is what we saw tonight. We can agree to disagree, and we don't have to like what's being proposed, or like or dislike. The fact of the matter is, everybody's voice here was heard tonight, and I thank you for that. Thank you very much.
We're going to take a two, three-minute break, in case you want to run for the doors.
I knew everybody, we got this.
I worked him over. How you doing, Mike?
And that's all the public's going to be.
I don't know, I forgot what kind of surgery he had.
Yep.
Because I know there's five or six people found.
Oh, I was shaking anyway.
For the other thing, yeah, the other way. Hey, how are you? How are you? How's Monica doing? Good, good, good.
Well, just surgery?
Wait a minute, did you tell me that when you guys, when I bumped into you at Best Buy?
No, 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 I saw you at Best Buy probably over the summer.
Oh, I didn't know that.
She's feeling better?
Sleeping stinks. Yeah, they took out two bones, two bones out of here.
Out of where?
They go through the front though.
Where?
Uh, yeah, well, they said the front's easier, it's safer. My number four and five were shot, they took them out with titanium.
Oh, God, tell her to send hello, tell her she's feeling better.
Oh, I know. Eventually they will, eventually, yeah. No, I think you guys are good, thank you for everything.
Hey, listen, remember? Remember? I was, I was, uh, uh, by Mossberg's cronies, remember?
Back on the record, 9:40 PM. Ordinances, second readings, public hearings. Mayor, everything ready for next week?
Yes.
I have, I have a quick question. Well, it's, it's not regarding the last ordinance, you know, the open space ordinance is tangential to it. Jasmine, question is for you. The million-dollar question, well, the $4.5 million question. I got something in my email regarding doing something to capital budget for $4.5 million. Can you?
Yes, if, if we want to go ahead with the turf fields, and we, we need to amend the capital, the temporary capital budget, there is no temporary capital budget right now, but we need to amend it to include that as a project.
In the budget?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And when, when is that resolution on for?
For next week.
Okay. I just have a quick opinion on that resolution that you sent. Jasmine?
Ruby sent.
Oh, Ruby, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, well.
It came from bond counsel.
Since you are the business administrator, there we go. I have just a couple issues regarding, so it's obviously regarding Field of Dreams, okay? So there's no mistake, and I'm glad Mike is in the audience, I'm glad Mike stayed in the audience. I like the Field Dream, I like the Field of Dreams idea. I support it. I like it. It's a good idea. Funding source, who else is in the audience? Some people I spoke to, they're gone, some of the residents. I made my opinion very known to them in terms of the funding issue. I don't have too much of an issue with the funding issue. I do want to still read up on the brief that I got. My issue, before I support anything for capital projects, okay? One, I want my estimate. I know Mr. Stanton asked you a while ago, "I want an estimate, what's this cost?", the answer was, "This has to go out to bid first." The, the use of the word plum is in no way trying to be negative. This project is a plum to anyone who's going to do it, okay? I don't see why any of the vendors, or whoever's, or whoever would like to do this project, can't give us a free estimate. Okay. What, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, because I want, I really want to hear it from Jasmine, because Mayor, I know you've put a lot, a time and sweat into this, and I do applaud you for that. Number two, number two, I haven't gotten, or this town hasn't gotten, excuse me, this town hasn't gotten its possessory interest yet, or I haven't gotten any, anything from the Board of Education yet, that says they're going to start grant, start the process of granting us that possessory, that possessory interest. Last but not least, what, what concerns me, what concerns me is unless they're being misquoted, but the articles that I read regarding the Board of Ed, how they're taking their time to still analyze the ramifications of this project, and how they're not going to put anything on the table until they've deliberated or whatnot. So those are my three concerns, but I'm glad Mike is in the office, in, in the audience. And oh, Mike, and I, and I point to you for a reason, because I've known you for a while, okay? And I've spoken to many of the residents on Brooklawn Drive, and I've spoken to many of the residents on the high side, okay? And there's one thing that they know about you because of me, okay? You're doing this out of pure love. You're not doing this because you're trying to relive your childhood dreams, or you're living vicariously through your son. They know that, and that's why I, I think it's a good project. However, before I move forward on Field of Dreams, and Jasmine, you'll have to excuse me if I throw off the timeline of the project, but I'm not comfortable moving yet until I get my assurances, my estimates, and my assurances that I'm going to get my possessory interest, and I get my green light from the Board of Education, and I would assume anybody in this audience would think that's fair.
Councilman, I would have to answer the question in regards to the estimate.
Sorry, Mayor, I should have asked you.
I sent the estimates to you guys via email last week, I broke it out to what the estimated cost would be. I sent that out on Friday, and, no, maybe Thursday I sent it out, but I brought a copy of, I brought a copy to Councilman Stanton, Council President Stanton, in regards to the estimated cost, which we said are conservative, and it breaks it out. It also breaks it out to the fact that if we decide to do six lanes as opposed to do an eight-lane track, and that, what I would, you know, in the negotiations, if the school board wants to have eight lanes, they would have to put up the dollars for the eight lanes. But I sent you that, I sent you the questions that were sent to me by the residents that I met with, and so, all, everything was sent in regards to the estimates. And, and regards to the bonding, the reason why the bonding's on next week is that, just in, just in case we do go forward, that portion will be in the budget.
I can't make that decision on just in case.
If we don't go forward, if we don't go forward, the bonding just, it doesn't get used, and we're not, we're not charged in any way.
Understood.
So, it doesn't affect it either way. It could be in the capital budget, but if you don't use it, there's no, um...
A capital...
So, the point...
Capital budget of the budget.
Right.
But we'll still be budgeting for 5% down.
Right, but if we don't, if we don't use it, then you don't get, you don't have to put the 5% down, and I, if I'm correct on that.
No, no, but we're budgeting for it.
Well, that's what, well, that's what...
No, no, Mr. Bigg, this is actually a budgetary question. Jasmine, in the, in the budget, in the budget, we're, we're only going to be budgeting for 5%, correct?
Yes, but that 5% is, would come from the open space trust fund.
We're going to pay for it out of the open space trust fund.
Yes.
That's what I was just confirming. Exactly, that's, okay.
And, and the fact of the matter is, there will be negotiations between the Board of Ed and the Township, just some preliminary ones. As you know, we had that meeting December 15th, and we had a meeting... As you know, we had that meeting December 15th, and we had a meeting before that, when it came to land use laws, that we had a meeting in closed session, and we, and we're moving forward based on that meeting that we did have with them. So, with that being said, uh, everything else is subject to negotiation with the Board of Ed and the Township Council and the Board of Ed. Um, there's still some things we have to hash out with the Board of Ed to move forward. And, you know, and that's something we have to feel comfortable with.
So based on the budget, we're budgeting $225,000 out of the Open Space. That's 5% of 4.5.
Right.
But at the same time, if we do not go forward, that $225,000 stays there.
No. No, because we've already expended it.
So, okay.
No, it's, it's...
No, I mean, we, I'm sorry, it's encumbered. Excuse me. Thanks, John.
From the Open Space Trust Fund.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Now, what happens if we don't go forward with the project?
If you don't go forward...
Where does that $225,000 go?
It goes back into the Open Space Trust Fund.
Okay, okay.
It goes right back into that?
Yeah, it's basically uncommitted.
That's fine. I just have a question. I did receive the email that you're talking about. So that number is the number?
No, that's not the number, that's the conservative number. We won't have the number until the bid goes out. And once the bid comes back, that will be our number. Once we put it up for bid, and if it gets that far. If it doesn't, then, you know, it could be less. We're anticipating it to be less, and that's what we're hoping.
I just have a, a couple things. First off, I'd like to start off by saying I do support the idea of the Field of Dreams as well. And I do believe it's a good project, because, one, it's going to save, the only other way this, these fields are gonna be fixed is if the school board has to do it, taxes are gonna go up. I mean, they dropped the ball, and now, you know, we need to help them out. The questions I have is, you know, you keep reading that, at these school board meetings, well, we're not ready to take action on this, and, you know, we haven't decided what we're gonna do. Are you, Mayor, I mean, are they giving you any indication, like, when they're gonna give you an answer? Are they gonna give us the 51% or not?
I think, I think what they're waiting on, Councilmen, is they're waiting on the Attorney General's opinion. Um, that's one thing I think they're waiting on. And if the Attorney General comes back and says, "You can do this," they'll, I, I believe they're gonna move forward.
Mayor, I'm not sure that the Attorney General's gonna, office is gonna come back and say that right now. What they need is, um, and this, again, this is the Board of Education side, they, they need, uh, permission from the Department of Education to divest themselves of a property interest. And since they would be divesting themselves of a property interest, in this case, uh, through the, uh, conservation easement, they need approval from the Department of, of Education. And so what, what they decided to do, which I think was probably, uh, wise, was to, uh, to try to get a, you know, a read from the AG's office as to whether or not, you know, they would stand in the way of blocking, uh, Department of Education approval. So I'm not sure we're, we're really waiting for an opinion from the, uh, from the Attorney General's office, a, as much as sort of a, you know, an indication that, uh, that they would find this problematic to approve or not.
The, uh, the other thing, I, um, it was brought up that, I guess it was checked out with the Interscholastic, so, whatever, that we only, they only need six lanes. And I think you stated it would be about 248,000 per track less, so it's about 500,000.
Right.
So if we don't need that, we can cut that 500,000 right off, right now. And if the school board wants to have the eight lanes, then they come up with the 500,000.
Exactly.
So, if we can cut that off right now, and the estimate is 4.5 million for the bonding, and we're gonna cut that 500,000 off, we don't need to bond for 4.5 if we're gonna eliminate those lanes right off the bat, right?
Yeah, yes, I mean...
I mean, I would say, if they're saying that we don't need those lanes, I mean, that's a savings of 500,000 right off the, I'm all in favor of that. Eliminate it.
I, I spoke to Dan Banzer of the Interscholastic, um, with, basically with track meets and stuff. He told me that it's preferred eight tracks by the state, but you don't have to have eight tracks. You can have six tracks and still have a sanctioned, um, state meet at, at the high school. So, I just wanted to come back and say that, you know, I spoke to them, and that if we didn't, we chose not to...
But I mean, that's a substantial amount of money.
It is substantial, to those two, to resurface the six lanes is 200 and something thousand.
210, I believe.
Yeah, and then to, um, just put two more lanes in.
Yes.
Because don't forget, in Precipiny High, you put the new lanes in, you're gonna have to move the bleachers back, and then you have to build a wall.
It's another 60,000 dollars on top that we saved.
We would have to do.
It's actually a saving of 544, I believe.
Well, I still think, I still think, um, you know, we could, I think we still might have to put the wall in.
Okay.
Uh, because, uh, actually, it would really be better for the residents in that area, if we did build that wall. But, um, I'll talk to Jimmy Walsh more on that, because we were discussing it before we came to the meeting, to see if we needed to build that wall or not.
Are you planning on making a decision on the lanes before we vote on this?
Listen, the decision, uh, listen, you guys can make the decision if you wanted to go from eight to six. I, I have no problem with six lanes. Um, you know, you know, you have to compromise some things sometimes, and this is probably one of them. Because I could say, you know...
But, but, but again, I'm sorry, I'll wait till you're done, Mayor.
All right. Fact is that, you know, this is, we can, if we shave that off, it doesn't affect the fa, fact that the schools and the towns can't use six lanes.
Right.
It's, it's...
And at the same time, the school could put in their budget and make it eight lanes.
Right.
And they could cover the, the additional...
But, but, but the main issue here, I think, I'm, and I might be wrong, is the possessory interest part. I don't do real estate law, but to me, it's the same thing as saying, we're gonna go out, we're gonna spend all this money on real expensive furniture for a house that it's not even an attorney review yet. That's the way I look at it. The, the funding, the funding, I made it clear. I, I, I truly, I, I lean towards the funding formula, because for me, it's a question, I think it's a question for all this council, and the mayor, of course, that, that's really easy to answer. Raise taxes, or don't raise taxes. I'm not gonna raise taxes. The rest of the council or the mayor, if they like, can raise taxes, but I won't. But I'm sure they don't want to. The issue is the possessory interest. I cannot jump into something that I have no control over right now. That's the main issue. It is the main issue. We could talk about the funding, the type of field, the type of track, the type of whatever's gonna go in there. We don't own it yet. It's nice to hypothesize what we'd love to do with this and how we're gonna pay for it. Those are ancillary questions. That's how I feel.
That's how I feel, because I think that's...
Councilman, are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Cut me off, thank you. Can I go now?
Did I cut you off?
No, the junior.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know. Um, I would like also to go on record, Mayor, Council. I am in favor of the project. However, I too have a problem, and I don't want to repeat what my two colleagues have said.
Please, repeat.
Uh, there are a lot of board members, you know, elected by the people. Not one of them has come out in the paper or vocally saying, "I'm in favor." I understand we have to wait, like Mr. Anglicino said, for the Attorney General or for the Board of Education. But they, uh, are, you know, their feelings known to the public that they're in favor. They heard tonight from this council, at least three of us, that we're in favor of this project. I really have a problem with them sitting there, waiting what's gonna happen. I think it's their move. We're ready to go.
And, and by the way, the Mayor, the Mayor, uh, and, and I do applaud the Mayor for, uh, making, making the move, uh, in these, in these tough economic times. But the Mayor said it very clearly before, shared services, okay? To share, you need two people to share. You're gonna share a sandwich, you're gonna share a cab, requires two people, okay? This is not gonna, this has to be a bilateral issue, not a unilateral issue. You come to us when you've got the funding. You come to us when you fully commit to the bonding. You come to us when you do it. No, no, no. Why don't you come to us? And I mean the Board of Education. And by the way, um, and I, I wish Mr. Vigano was here. I'm friendly with everyone on the Board of Education. I think, you know, they're nice people. Um, I think what they do, they put their heart into it. But this shared services implies a bilateral exchange of all the issues. You have to come to us. You have to come to us, you have to meet us halfway. Again, in my hypothetical, I'm gonna go out and to fortune off, or whatever's still open out there, buy $20,000 worth of furniture that a house, that, for a house that's not even an attorney review yet. I can't, no one in this room would do that. The main issue is the possessory interest issue. That's the main issue for me.
Just add on a little bit, I'm actually, uh, I'm waiting to see one thing. I wanna see what the final project looks like. I wanna see the curfews. I wanna see how many days a year the lights are on. I wanna see, oh, they were talking about Sundays having no lights.
Quality of life.
Six o'clock on Sat, I wanna see the quality of life, how it changes for the people on the hillside, on the high. So to tell you the truth, my opinion right now, I wanna see everything on paper before I, I really give one.
Well, if I may, Council President, that you would have to approve it, so you will see it on paper. Uh, because the, these curfews are not normal in Precipiny, to have a nine o'clock curfew. So you would have to agree with the Board of Education that you would have that nine o'clock curfew, as opposed to, as, as with the, you know, the residents in, on Brooklawn Drive, and, you know, in Precipiny Hills and Precipiny High, those are other things that we're gonna have to definitely, not so much negotiate with the Board of Education, but negotiate amongst ourselves on how we wanna proceed forward, especially when it comes to traffic, safety, and all that kinda stuff. Which is something I'm gonna, um, I will send you any reports that I get in regards to the, the traffics. If we even do a study, or the chief. Uh, the fact is that this is when it becomes open, this is gonna come open between the Township and the Board of Education. I do agree that, maybe the Board of Education's been silent, maybe their town, their attorney told them to be silent, I don't know. I know, I don't feel comfortable being silent, and I think we, um, addressed that in the last few meetings. Fact is that, you know, I really believe this is a good project, not just for the Township and the Board of Education, but for the community at large.
I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Stanton's, uh, quality of life issues, but again, these are not issues that are pre-contractual. I mean, I'm sorry, excuse me, post-contractual. Again, we talk about these things before, before we make any kind of agreement with the Board of Education. It's like we're signing a contract, and then, well, sign the blank page, but we'll figure out the terms later. We've gotta get the possessory interest first, then we've gotta talk about what's gonna happen. Curfews, lighting, parking, anything like that. Barking, thank you, Mr. Karifi. Then, we say, okay, now, we're gonna explore getting into the project.
Everyone good?
Okay, so Jasmine, maybe you might wanna put that off to the side for next week, okay?
Good. Status of adopted ordinances. Ordinance of Township Council, Township Precipiny, Precipiny Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, to amend Supplement Chapter 290 entitled Parks, Recreation Areas, Public Lands, Article 1, Under Code of Township Precipiny Troy Hills, 2012, colon, 01, adopted date 214, 2012. Ordinance amended Supplement Chapter 290, Parks, Recreation Areas, Public Lands, Permit Fees, 2012, colon, 03, adopted 214, 2012. Discussions reminders, scheduled meetings, 3:20, 2012, 7:30 PM, regular meeting, public invited, public participation. 4:03, 2012, 7:30 PM, agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. Minutes for approval, regular meeting of 1:10, 2012, discussions none. Mayor? Anything to add on?
Oh, I don't have anything, anything here, do I?
No, you have nothing there, just goes here, if there's anything you want to add on.
No, I, I think I did it all tonight.
Okay. Administration, Jasmine?
All right, um...
I know you said there was one thing you wanted to discuss.
There are a couple.
Okay.
One, is I had sent, um, uh, the council a memo on the, um, negotiations with the no caterer, um, on that contract. Do you want to discuss that in closed session, or do you want me to just go through the, um, what, uh, what has been negotiated?
I have no problem with you going forward.
Council, what do you think?
What do you think?
Well, it's your choice. It's certainly a matter that's appropriate for closed session, if that's your, uh, desire, because it's contractual obligations. You're not obligated to go into closed session to discuss them, but, uh, to the, to the...
We're going into closed, then.
To the extent we're going into closed, it may be appropriate to just discuss, uh, because you may have questions that come up that would be really more appropriate for closed session.
All right, and, and then, um, the other issue, um, is the, um, I, and I also sent, um, a memo to the council on this, is the prescription insurance benefits. Um, Ada Visacay is here from Access Point, she's one of our, um, brokers, and negotiated the, um, renewal. Did a great job, um, it's, um, it's a 0% increase, and, um, I don't know when we last saw a 0% increase, um, it's, it's, um, on, on the prescription. But this, this will be very quick, I, and, uh, we, we've been with Bennecard for two years, I think, um, and we would be going back to Bollinger.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Best time of the year again, I think I'm here often. And this is really...
Use the mic.
Use the mic, even with my loud voice, huh? Um, even, uh, this is after this last session, the mine is very easy. And just to give you a little bit, a quick history on your prescription drug card, we went from a 110% loss ratio last year. What that means is that for every dollar you brought in, they took in premium, they paid out a dollar 10 cents. So this year, um, it went down, I like to say, to 96% loss ratio. So they actually had a 4 cents profit, per se. But in order to administer the plan, prescription is approximately 10%. So, they didn't, they lost money last year, they were okay this year, because the insurance companies get some rebate from drug companies. So it was, don't wanna get into it, but it's really a great, great, great renewal. If you look at, and I have copies here for the public, whoever wants to pick them up, one of each. So if you look at your, um, sheet, this one, what we did was, um, Bennecard came back with a renewal of 9.50. And I went, um, they refused to negotiate, so we went out to several other companies, I think a total of 11 or 12, I have it. Uh, but these are the ones that made sense. So one was, the renewal was nine and a half, if you look at your first column, the red is nine and a half, your current rates, your renewal rates on the very bottom. Then it would be Bollinger, um, PCA-RX, GS-POPS, Maxor, these are all fully insured companies. And, um, I went back to my two best fully insured companies, Bennecard, because disruption is always never great for the employees, um, and Bollinger, and I was able to negotiate Bennecard to a 3% increase, and Bollinger to a 0% increase. Um, now, there's a couple reasons why, um, this happened, and that's been, one is, because this is what we do, is negotiate rates, we know what constitutes rates. And another one that really helped us out this year, is that about 16 drugs that are brand will come off the brand, and they're gonna be generic. And they were, and several more than 2013 and 14, but, um, those were on your list of top 25 drugs that people used. So that really helped us out by, for doing this. So as you can see, this is like a phenomenal renewal, when, uh, prescription drug increases, just the trend alone, what it costs for a drug today, what it costs tomorrow, it's approximately 13%. This just shows you in a graph, um, other companies, um, and I'd just like to point out to, the first column is, on the bottom, is Bennecard, fully insured prescription, compared to some self-funded. Medco came in, uh, actually, based on the, um, prescription written out last year, if the same thing happened, you, it would be a decrease of 1.38. But there is no, no stop loss, it could go on forever. As you could see, this blue column going up, so we, let's say you had a horrendous year, and your scripts doubled, and, not likely, but it could have happened, and it will keep on going. The other one that was, um, we quoted on a self-insured, was IDA, the one you have your medical with. And they were an increase of 12%, and they have a stop loss, but it would have been all the way up to a 44% increase. So, these didn't really work out. So my recommendations would be to go to Bollinger, um, because you know what your cost is for this year. Um, it's a fixed cost, and because it's the first year, we're starting to see a trend down, because the year before, I think it was a 108% loss ratio. Um, we need a little more... because the year before, I think it was a 108% loss ratio, we need a little more data to see it going down and working for us before we start going on the self-insured. I just did not feel as comfortable as I do with a zero fixed cost increase. Any questions?
So zero, 0% increase.
Yes.
Thank you.
Zero. It's unheard of. And I have another good news, and I know that unless you're in the insurance industry, you're going to think that I'm not thinking that this is good, but I was able to get a one-year cap. So next year, your increase will not be more than nine and a half percent, even if it's 150% loss ratio. This is like, I haven't been able to do something like this in years. So those are the good news that you don't have to, same as last year, unheard of.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
The last item I just want to discuss is to try to schedule some budget meetings.
Okay.
I don't know if, does everyone have their calendars? No?
I didn't bring my calendar.
All right. How about if I email some dates out and, but I'm looking to have one on Saturday, 24th.
Plus what we talked about due to the public, nothing, no 5:00 PM.
No, no. I'm looking at two evenings and then that one Saturday.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, next is our engineering, Mr. Cicero.
Uh, here we go.
Next.
Okay, yeah, no, no. Also, we have a resolution under engineering, supporting the NJ DOT I-80 Porcippany Troy Hills roadway improvement project. What is that, anyone?
That's the DOT.
Besides improving Route 80.
It's the Littleton Road ramps.
Oh, okay.
Do you remember, they, you know, it came up about a year ago, pretty long time ago, actually.
Okay, I'll take the group.
Okay, everyone?
Everyone, group. Okay, put that on for resolution.
Status of road resurfacing, putting stone area, no change, revision to escrow requirements in connection with residential sidewalk driver repairs, no change. Edgefield drive, no parking zone, upper, no change. Canterbury Estates, vacation of lots, 26 and 77 and Block 98, no change. New road flood mitigation, no change. Train horns at intersections, quiet zones, no change. Glacier Hills sidewalk, no change. NJ, oh, okay, this is what I just mentioned before. NJ DOT resolution of support, right Jasmine?
Yes.
Route 80, 287, 202 improvements. The township should discuss and approve the resolution, which we already did, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Chief Financial Officer. Everything set?
Yes.
Okay, attorney, anything?
Not for open.
But you want us to, you don't want to put on the amendment to the capital budget? That sounds like, you don't want that on.
Yeah, we'd like to hold off.
Right.
Okay, Township Office Committee's communications, correspondence none. Applications, person-to-person, place-to-place transfer, expansion of premises, liquor license to Sierra Hospitality Corporation, 299 Smith Road, Porcippany, New Jersey. Mary, everything set with that?
Yes, but did you read the ordinance introduction? I think you just missed it.
Wait, oh, you're talking about under administration? I think Mr. Stan just, well, Mr. Stan.
What did I miss?
No, Mr. Stan assumed correctly. I don't think anyone had a problem with any of them.
Yeah, no, we just, yeah, everything's good.
And the resolutions, correct, Mr. Stan?
Yes.
Yes, everything is fine with the transfer.
Next, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed hearing.
Public here. You specified that the motion is to go in closed session to discuss threatened litigation, contractual negotiations involving two matters of contractual issues.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to go in a closed session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Stan?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero, Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Counsel President, may I? Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council has the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss personnel and contract negotiations, and whereas the minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved by Township Council, Township Porcippany Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
If I don't see anyone after this, have a good night.
We will be having public, once we come back.
I have a presence.
We will be having public section once we come back, yes, yes.
You were correct. It won't be that long.
You have to have, you can't, when the properties are.
Get it all. Mary, roll set? I make a mo, I make a motion to go back in a closed session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
To open session. Okay, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Yes.
Excuse me, in the corner.
All right, first, I'd just like to start this off, I'd like to make a motion that we rescind the contract with Today in America.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, we have an add-on, Mr. Farrar.
Resolution, whereas the Township of Porcippany Troy Hills advertised for bids for operation of the catering banquet facilities and provision of related service at the Knolls Country Club, on two occasions, both November 30, 2011, and on February 16, 2012, and whereas no bids were received on either November 30, 2011, or February 16, 2012, and whereas the Township's mayor, business administrator, director of purchasing, and director of municipal utilities have revised the rent proposed to be more cost-effective, including a capital improvement schedule of future improvements to the facilities, and whereas, section, excuse me, NJ SA 48:11-5, comma, 3, of the local polo contracts law allows a contract to be negotiated after no bid will receive on two separate occasions, and whereas the mayor, business administrator, director of purchasing, and director of municipal utilities have negotiated this contract with the current Knolls Cater and Recommend award to the Knolls Country Club in catering Knolls and Green Bank Road, Porcippany, New Jersey, 07054, for a monthly rent of $55,000 for each month of the initial 60-month term, as well as the $20,000 per month for the initial 25-month period to be deposited into a Township escrow account for the future improvements to the facilities. Now therefore be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Porcippany Troy Hills that the contract for operation of the catering banquet facilities and provision of related services at the Knolls Country Club be awarded as stated above in accordance with the terms and conditions contained in the advertising specification and negotiated proposal, and that the mayor and the township clerk are authorized to execute the contract.
Do I hear a second? Second by myself. Motion by Mr. Farrar, second by myself, roll call.
Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, I'll now open this to the public, you'll have five minutes.
I'd just like to commend the council for rescinding that. There's no need to go into Today in America. I thought it was done in haste and it was nice to see that you guys rescinded it. Just a question, though, has any deposits been made to Today?
No.
No.
Okay, so we're.
And they've agreed to, they've agreed that the contract, to let us out of the contract anyway.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Bob Crawford, 35 Hidden Glen Drive. I think I might be able to shed a little information about the possessory, possessory interest question, having been to the board meetings and also having opened a number of their documents, I'm fairly familiar with the status and I think you all need to be briefed on it. December 19th, a letter was sent down to the Department of Education by the lawyer for the Board of Education. And what the lawyer, the purpose of the lawyer was to try to see if the Board of Education could position an argument that the Department of Education might find suitable in terms of considering whether or not to allow the board to at least 51% control. Letter really looked at asking for a conservation easement and it also made the argument that the property that would be ceded would be of no use. That indeed was the fundamental part of their argument. It appears, because after three months now, they still haven't heard back, that that issue is undergoing a great deal of consideration down in Trenton. In fact, we know that the original person it was sent to said this is beyond my pay grade and pushed it up another level. So after three months, the Board of Education has yet to receive any communication from Trenton as to whether or not they will allow the Board of Education to proceed, hence the delay. The other thing that you need to know, and this has also been gathered after talking to Board of Education meeting in public, is that they have decided not to do any analysis until they hear back from Trenton. They've decided, why go through all of the analysis if indeed there's a possibility the answer might be no? We, a number of us, have pushed them and said, look, what you should be doing is working on this simultaneously in case the Trenton comes back and gives you an approval. And one of the first places that you need to look into is how would you arrange the scheduling if you only had 49% control of the field? We raised a number of questions with the Board of Education and asked them to look into those questions. They said they would not look into any questions until they had received the word from the state. So, Cicero, with regard to getting an answer on possessory interest, they haven't even begun the process of determining where they're going and won't move there until they hear from the state and there's no indication from the state, at least as of last Thursday, when they might come forward with an opinion. So just to give you the context of what's going on on the other side.
I'm sorry, Bob, you got that from whom?
So attending Board of Education meetings and opened documents and having read the letters, but what I would strongly encourage, this.
Confirm that, Jasmine?
Well, but I don't.
I'm not saying I don't believe you because I want to.
Absolutely. You can, you can open the letter that was sent December 19th.
What are you asking us to confirm?
I just want to confirm that the board is still waiting because, again, that really, and I think I speak for some of the other council members, is really that, that is what needs to go first.
Right.
That's what needs to go first.
Well, I have the letter. The Board's counsel has recommended to the Board, and we have discussed and come to an agreement amongst the lawyers at least, that the issuance of a conservation easement works legally and that that would be, from a structure perspective, the desirable way to proceed. And it's my understanding from speaking with council that the Board of Education supports that structure. And that's why when they wrote the letter down to Trenton, they included that language. So they're, they're certainly agreeable, I think, to conveying a conservation easement to the town if the deal structure is blessed, for lack of a better word, by the Department of Education.
You're precisely right, and that's the big if. The if is if the Department of Education in Trenton accepts their argument that indeed the property is of no use. So they, and I believe.
And when it says property of no use, their argument, just to clarify, because it's an important point, is that what they're saying is, is that they don't need the fields 51% of the time. And therefore, the argument is that they can, you know, declare that property not needed 51% of the time, not in use. And that would be because you have to say that you don't need property in order to convey an interest in it, in the school board world. You know that world better than I do.
Yes, I do.
And so they want the state to adopt that logic in terms of blessing the deal structure from the Board of Ed's perspective.
So we're in absolute agreement. There's a huge if right now in terms of whether or not the state will buy into the argument, the logic provided by the board attorney. But I will also say that in conversations, and this is, is that the board members are taking a long, hard look now as they've gathered additional information. When they advised the lawyer to send the letter positioning a possibility, they did not have all the information they currently have. So I would strongly urge, suggest to council that you establish some very close communications on a regular basis with Frank Dr. Calabria and the superintendent to keep a continual check on their temperature because, as you say, Mr. Cicero, the possessory interest here, the house that you're going to put that furniture in may not have yet been built.
But you won't get, but just so the town, the council's clear too, in terms of the, you know, the deal structure, what we would envision, I think, is a, and we haven't really gotten this far with them, but what I'm envisioning is, is that we would essentially enter into a contract with them or some sort of memorandum of agreement whereby we would agree to do certain things. One would be to enter into a shared service agreement, that would be, frankly, a lot of the input from the public has been very helpful to me in terms of making lists of issues that need to be identified and addressed, not only from the municipal government side, but also from the resident's side in a shared services agreement. That would be one thing that we have to do. The second thing that we'd have to do as part of the closing, using the House analogy, as part of the closing, we'd have to draft a form of conservation easement, but that would be signed, I guess, really simultaneously with the execution and signing of the shared services agreement. So that would come at the end of the, of the process.
And then again, I'll agree, but my point would be is it's been three months now that the Department of Education in Trenton has had this question and they have yet to move on it. So unless you all, I think you all need to understand perhaps the timeframe we're dealing with and indeed what is driving the delay in terms of what the board is doing, and understand that the board, at least as of last week, had made the decision not to do the required analysis until they heard back from the state. And once they hear back from the state, then they're going to have to spend considerable time doing the analysis. Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring you up to date on that.
Mr. Crawford makes a good point in regards to the communication because what happens is, you know, on our side, I feel that we need to have information available, but at the same time, when you don't really have any feedback, it becomes, you know, very difficult.
Pat Patacia, 182 Hawkins Avenue. I ask with all due respect if you can just give me a little bit more time tonight because I do have two different areas.
Cut in 30 seconds. Go ahead, Pat.
Well, first off, I looked at the ordinance that is given to you guys to vote on, you know, in the future, and just some things that I've noticed that you should look into. Especially, I'm going to page two of the new ordinance, 899, where you say that wording is on active and passive recreation. It is not on the ordinance itself, okay, the one that is in our library. Those words are not there. I don't know where they are other than that, but they are not on our ordinance. Okay, so.
I know they're in the public question.
It might be in the public question, but it's not on the ordinance. So we have a lot of problems with the ordinance, we know that. Okay, so the active and devices wording allows you to change the statute. This is what we're told, this wording would allow us to change the statute to be able to go ahead with the Field of Dreams. It's not on our ordinance and I didn't see it on the ballot, let's do match it up. Recreation wording is not shown on that ordinance. Next thing I'm going to concern about is number 40, 12157, that you state that these are requirements given by the state. Actually, the state allows you choices, it's not requirements, they're choices. You can do any or all of them or a combination of them, okay? So it's not really a requirement, you do have choices that you can make. You, the town council, are being asked to approve a new ordinance and the taxpayers should be aware of this and be able to vote on this because you are changing this ordinance in entirety. The town council did not act on the state statute in 97 or in 2006. There was discussion in 2006 regarding recreation, but nothing changed on it. There was discussion in 2006 regarding recreation, but nothing changed on it. There was lots of opinions, and nothing was picked up for it. Our ordinance remained the same, except for the allocation of the monies. 40, 12, 15.8, public recreation wording again, again, is, I'm asking where that wording is coming from. If it's on the ballot, but it's not on the ordinance, again, we have a mismatch ordinance and ballots, and we are in bad shape.
But all is, all is irrelevant for, for purposes of the opinion.
I don't think so. And referendum ballots are not matching up. In that same area, you have purposes specified. Again, I'm telling you, we have choices. I want to know, any of you town council members, did any of you work on this ordinance, or any of you consulted before this came before you? Did you have any input on this ordinance? And one of the most important things that I see is that we're picking up Blue Acres, which is very good. However, there is new wording out there. The title of our ordinance cannot be what it is right now, you have to add floodplain protection in that wording, and that's the new documentation that's out there from the state. I got this from Assemblyman Bucow's office, so I do know what I'm speaking about. That wording does have to be put there, and there are many places where it's not out there on this ordinance. And leaving that out, I think, will somehow, in the future, prevent us from helping the people in Lake Eyewatha. Again, there's another section. You're adding, 1, 2, 3, and 4, you're adding the debt services and the Blue Acres. Debt service is very big. We never, we never voted on that. Bonding, I see it on the ordinance, but I never see it on a referendum or ballot. So again, we have ordinance out there that don't match our referendums. And since debt service is being mentioned for the first time, that's a big thing the taxpayers should have a right to vote on. And of course, the town council has been bonding out all this time, and I'm not saying it's your fault, I'm saying it's the misinterpretation of our leaders and what they tell you. Again, just this wording. I'm gonna end this with, these are just a few of the problems that I have come across. To be honest, there could be very many more. The fact that floodplain protection wording is missing from the title, which should be incorporated per Chapter 173, PL 211, Municipal Open Space Recreation Floodplain Protection Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. It makes me wonder, why is this being left out? Again, we are rushing to get this through and not making sure everything is correct. Town council members, I ask you to do your due diligence. We elected you in good faith with the expectations that you would do for this community what's best, and to make sure our monies are spent wisely. In my opinion, if you are considering changing our ordinances, making all these changes, now including debt services, it would be a must that this goes before the public. And that's just in regards to just checking over the ordinance. Now I'd just like to read another statement I have, 1, 2, 3. You don't have to respond.
No, no, I'm not uging you, I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, how much farther can we go over five minutes?
Uh, it's just, it's swiftly, it's just swiftly.
30 seconds.
Okay, tonight I ask you to give the ordinance 2012-10 your due diligence. The town council is being asked to vote on this ordinance, which would change our open space trust fund in entirety. The ramifications of this would be great. The taxpayer has already spoken 89 in 2006 as to what our open space trust fund was to be used for. Now you take the town, now you, the town council, are being asked to ignore the residents and make the necessary changes and vote this new ordinance in without taxpayer approval. We are rather push for this cha, charge for this changes in relation to the Field of Dreams project, which could not proceed without these changes. Really not sure it fits into the new wording either. I ask you, council members, if you worked on this ordinance, a change, or were any of you consulted? I do agree our ordinance needs to be cleaned up, but Miss Dingusino's words. Our ordinance and referendums don't match up. We never voted on bonding and debt services, and yet the town council has been bonding out for years. This alone should make the new ordinance go to the voters for referendum. If you feel the need to change our open space trust fund ordinance, this is a major issue. The adding of Blue Acres for flood, for floodplain protection, in my opinion, was done to encourage the town council to vote for these changes. Blue Acres was effective January 2012, we should have been on this right away. This is now putting you in the position of a rock and a hard place. If you vote this down, then Blue Acres doesn't go through. Shame on the mayor for putting you in this position. You are being asked to repeal our ordinance. To repeal is to, to mean revoke or annul officially. To revoke is to annul by withdrawing. To annul is to nullify, to cancel. To nullify means to having no legal fit, force, and it's invalid. Now, in that terminology, again, I say, you are nulling, you are annuling it, you are whining it out like it never existed. Therefore, the taxpayers should have a right to vote, if it gets that far. If this is the case, and a referendum should go to the taxpayers.
Pat, I have to cut you off, Pat. Thank you.
I got the majority of it, of course.
Thank you.
But please, look at that ordinance, okay?
All right, Tom, you get the reen a half minute now.
All right, Tom, I'll do that.
Good evening, folks, and happy Sunshine Week. Sunshine Week is a national initiative to promote a dialogue about the importance of open government and freedom of information. Oprah's really a wonderful thing. You know how I celebrated Sunshine Week? Today, through Oprah, I put a fresh copy of the town's check register on my website so the taxpayers could see every expenditure from every budget category in an easy-to-read, sortable, searchable format. I love to know what the Transparency Committee has done in the past 28 months since its inception, and particularly the 13 months after the first and only meeting that Ms. Catanzaro and I were able to attend before we were summarily dismissed by disingenuous underhanded ordinance change. However, last time, we simply requested any information, we were told that the Transparency Committee would not be operating transparently, and we were tersely told to mind your own business. But happy Sunshine Week, anyway. You know, I have to echo Mr. Nelson about the, about the Today in America. I think it's great that you rescinded that contract, but something that also came up in this whole discussion, the question was raised ironically by Councilman Cesaro, what happened to the Economic Development Advisory Committee that the mayor introduced in 2009? Part of the mayor's response in Parsippany Life was, directed toward me, as Tom Wyka was a political appointment who has an axe to grind, he has no qualifications to serve on the committee, and it remains my hope that he will resign from the committee so I can replace him with an able person so the committee can be productive. So, in the mayor's eyes, I'm holding economic development in the town hostage through my audacity of wanting to serve on said committee. But what's interesting about the comment is that while the mayor said it is his hope that I resign, he's never even asked me to resign. After two years, after two years of having a full resume from me sitting on his desk, and mind you, a full resume was not requested of any applicant except myself and Ms. Catanzaro, which I found out through Oprah, it was only this past December that I heard any discussion about my qualifications at all. First, the idea that I'd be disruptive or make the committee unproductive is an especially abhorrent statement to me, as every Thursday morning, the mayor and I sit down at a meeting of community members, prominent Democrats and Republicans and independents alike, putting aside our differences to help the community, otherwise known as the Kiwanis Club of Greater Parsippany. Second, the idea that I'm unqualified, or I'm taking up space for other more qualified people, is disingenuous at best and dishonest at worst. Through an Oprah request, I found that there are six other applicants for the 11 seats on the committee. Can I see their resumes? No. None were requested or required, except for the basic volunteer form. Can I see their volunteer forms? No. Through a quirk in the law, the public is only allowed to see their qualifications if they're appointed to the committee. So this serves, this really solves a big mystery I was grappling with, as why no other applicant has ever been appointed by the mayor or council. But here's the kicker, even if you did appoint all of these applicants, assuming they're truly well-qualified, there's still at least two or three spots still open on the committee, like I said. Disingenuous at best and dishonest at worst. The facts are clear, this committee's been held up for two years, and all the times I've asked the mayor, looked him in the eye, he never once mentioned your objection to me or my qualifications until three months ago. You have applicants, you got plenty of spare seats. It's a shame for all of us in the community that never took this seriously, that it appears nothing more than an empty campaign promise at this point. Now, the last statement is somewhat irrelevant after Today in America, but one thing that the mayor also said in Parsippany Life, it goes to demonstrate that since Mr. Wyka is upset that I'm doing the Today in America segment, then something good is happening for the taxpayer. And my wife put that in perspective for me. Yes, it is good for the Parsippany taxpayer when Tom Wyka gets upset with the mayor's questionable decisions, and we actually saw a very good result tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to respond, for me, council president. First and foremost, in regards to the Today, Today in American show, you know, yes, I read Jonathan Nelson's blogs on all that kind of stuff and his thing, but I talked to the Attorney General in Florida, I spoke to Fayetteville, Arkansas, which I'm sure you guys didn't do in regards to that, but that's beside the point. Mr. Wyka, you do have an axe to grind, you're so full of it when you come up here, you try to use the guise of good government, transparency in government, you quote Thomas Jefferson, a well-informed government, but when you ran for elected office, you were, you were misinforming a lot of residents as well. The fact of the matter is this, you were a political appointment, I'll say it to your face, I'll say it, and just like you come up here, and I think that's a good dialogue. To sit here and say you don't have an axe to grind, you're so full of it, it's not even funny. And to sit here and come up here constantly about the economic development, I haven't pointed nobody. And I made my, my, my point pretty clear why. You were a political appointment, that's a fact. Bottom line is this, when 2013 expires, I will activate the committee. I've said it, I'm gonna say it just like that. I'm very upfront with you about it, that's the fact. And Mr. Crawford, you can laugh all you want.
Thank you, Mr. McNulty.
Thank you.
I have my rights.
And the fact of the matter is, you come up here and use that guise of good government all the time, the fact of the matter is, you know, you, you sit there and you try to put yourself on a pedestal, which you're not. And yes, we do belong to Kiwanis, but you never approach me and I never approach you. We don't sit together, we don't even talk to each other. Only thing we have in common, like you said, is we both like the New York Giants. Thank you.
Good evening, again. Rick McNulty, 5 St. John's. Most of my points right now are gonna be about the ordinance 2012, colon, 10. I'm just gonna, a question was asked, which was never answered, and if I have five minutes, I don't need that much time, so I would appreciate an answer now. Did any of the four council members do any of the drafting of the, or do you do any of the drafting of any of the ordinance? I don't really know how it works.
None whatsoever.
None whatsoever. Fair enough. My questions are, what happens to the exist, I guess, whom? Mr. Inglesino then, as councilman, do you draft these?
Yes, that's, that's in my job description, you know.
Thank you very much. So a lot of these questions-
By the way, Pat, Mr. McNulty, unless we have an ordinance that we want to pass, yeah, I mean, we'll draft it ourselves.
I assume you want to pass all the ones you say yes to.
I'm sorry?
I assume you want to say, you want to pass all the ones you say yes to.
Draft the ones I want to say yes to?
You said pass.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I'm just, I meant, I meant to say that there are ones that we can draft if we want, if we have an interest in a particular-
I was.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. What happens to the existing funds once the open space fund is dissolved and a new fund is created? Can the existing funds of approximately $5.5 million be used in any manner described in 40, colon, 12, dash, 15, dot, 7? If this is true, then the town council can in fact pay for the entire Field of Dreams project with cash immediately after this ordinance is passed. What happens to each allocation if they are not used in any particular year? Currently, the unused funds, which you talk about in your opinion, currently, the unused funds go back into the general portion to be used just for acquisition of properties. But this ordinance, the way it's drafted, takes out that wording in current code 51, dash, 7B, and does not replace it with any wording at all. Why use the specific wording in the new Chapter 51, dash, 7? This is Section 3 of the new ordinance, and by using the language including but not limited to, for what else exactly are you trying to use these funds? The purposeful lack of specificity, I'm sorry, is very troubling. Also in Section 3, there's specific mention of using the definition of acquisition from 40, colon, 12, dash, 15, dot, 1. Can it be assumed that all the other words that are described in 15, dash, 1 are also defined as described in 15, dash, 1? For those that are not familiar, there's about eight or nine words that are specifically defined in that area. In this ordinance, it only talks about the word acquisition, so the question is, are all eight words also defined the same way? Section 9, why that exact wording? It's very unusual, and I cannot find another example using that exact wording on any other amended ordinance. Parsippany amends a lot of ordinances, and as far as my research provided, has never ever used such wording before. Are you looking to act on this ordinance immediately after passing it? If you don't know what it says, or be well, I mean, I-
I know what it says, we, we put it in there, there was no preference by the council suggested on that, and there's no intention to act immediately on the ordinance that I'm-
But it is very different. Okay. Fair enough, and the answer, but it's very different than any other. You answer the question. Going back to the actual ordinance itself, if you have it in front of you, it might be easier to read through. Section 2A, 6, you talk about the payment of debt services, and then, first off, the first, which other municipality's debt are we looking to repay?
Well, first of all, the, the language in Section A is, is taken verbatim out of the state statute.
Um, not exactly.
Well, we didn't make that language up.
You're right, it's taken verbatim without any changing to be local to us.
1 through 7 is, is taken right out of the state statute.
Except for one thing, which is, can you explain to me where subsection A, B, D, E, or G are?
A, B, D, G of what?
In Section 2A, 6. You refer to question, and payment of debt services for any of the purposes set forth in subsection A, B, D, E, or G. Where are they?
A, B, G of this section, which relates to the statute.
It's 1, 2, 3, and 4.
1, 2, 3, and 4.
But it's not A, B.
Correct.
Okay. So then, again, the wording that you say, the payment of debt services in debtness issued or incurred by a municipality, are we gonna pay Roxbury's debt?
No.
It doesn't say our-
It can only be for your municipality.
You, as an attorney-
You can't pay somebody else's debt.
No, but believe me, you really play with the words of a lot of things here. So, it doesn't take a lot to clear that up, to say, the payment of our municipality.
We can certainly specify that.
Specificity, yeah, that's good.
30 seconds.
Section 3B, the funds may be utilized for the acquisition. And then again, the other municipalities, you do it again there, which funds may be utilized in Section 3B? The lack of specificity. Second word, the funds may be utilized. Which funds?
Funds that are in the open space trust fund.
So all of them. You're not specifying those in Section A, 1, A, 2, or A, 3, are you?
A, 1, A, 2, or A-
In Section 3A.
Section 3A.
And then you go into A, 1, no more than 8/10ths. And then you go into A, 2, no more than 2/10ths. A, 3, no more than-
And this is, and this is what the current law provides for.
But, also in the current law, in B, it then specifies-
Okay, just finish your sentence, time's up, I'm sorry. There's one more.
Yeah, go, just go quick, please.
I understand, but it-
And then you, and then after the meeting, you guys can have a drafting session off to the side.
So again, you, you don't clarify which funds, so you're, you're literally saying all of the funds that are collected in Section B can be utilized. And then the second is, can you read Section 8 to me?
Section 8?
Yes, please.
I'm not gonna read Section 8 to you.
All of it?
I, I haven't, I'm not gonna read Section 8 to you.
Can you find it?
I, I can find it, but I'm not gonna read it to you.
There is no Section 8?
It goes right from Section 7 to Section 9, right?
Okay, all right, time's up, thank you.
How about any of the other questions that I did ask?
I got one quick question for you, actually. From, just from my understanding, the breakdown with the 5.5 after the new ordinance, it gets broken down where it's 50, 40, 10, which is what it's quoted around, how the money be broken down or not?
The percentages are as they were. There's no change as of the percentages. What we, right, that hasn't changed. What, what has changed is, to Pat's point, is in your ordinance now, if you don't use them for these purposes within a certain period of time, it all goes back into the quote-unquote "general open space fund." That's not what the referendum provides. The referendum that was, was passed in 2006 allocates these percentages. So what the ordinance does is it makes the new ordinance consistent with the referendum that was approved in 2006 in terms of keeping the allocation, because the referendum in 2006 didn't say, if you don't spend, use the monies for these purposes, that it reverts back to a general fund. Didn't say that. That's what the ordinance said. That's not what the referendum said. So what we've, it's a policy decision to be made by the council. What we've suggested is that the ordinance be made consistent with the referendum in terms of the allocations. I also think legally that there is some confusion about that, because, again, the current ordinance, the way I read it, presumes a distinction between recreation and open space. That is not a distinction that is recognized in the state law, nor is it a distinction that is recognized in your initial 1988 referendum. So I think that provision of the ordinance should be repealed for that legal reason, but the policy decision in terms of whether or not you want to keep the allocations the way they are, so much for historic, so much for, you know, Blue Acres, et cetera, if you want to keep those allocations in the general fund, you certainly should, and I think that's consistent with what the voters approved back in 2006. So that's what we intended to do there, was to bring the ordinance more into conformance with what the voters had expressed an interest in doing back in 2006.
Because there was some comments that people were saying, the 5.5, now the town, the mayor could do what they want. No, they can't.
Well, no, because we're just saying, remove the provision that says that it all just goes back into some general fund for acquisition, because that's not what the voters said. And again, I mean, I think, for acquisition, for what? For, it doesn't specify. So we tried to clarify that.
I am unclear with what, it sounds like we're asking the same question, and I'm still unclear the answer. If this ordinance passed as written, again, whatever, that 5.5 million, would it, could it be used for any of the three major portions, whether it is improvement, or historical, or acquisition?
The intent would be that it would stay in the percentages as approved by the voters.
So it's defined, 10%, I think, if I remember the number. 10% would automatically just go straight to the store.
Would stay, yeah, could be used for historic and...
But it stays.
It stays, correct. It stays. The way to think about it is, it stays. It keeps, the money in the account would maintain its current allocation.
50, 40, 10 would be the...
Correct.
Again, even if all that money's already been previously spent, you're then taking it out of the acquisition fund and then creating... Sir, I understand what you're saying, but you got like a lot of time.
We can certainly speak after. You have my number now. You can give me a call.
You can. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Council president, may I make one more comment?
Okay.
Tonight...
Mayor, how about we wait till...
Oh, the public session's done.
Yeah.
Seeing nobody else come forward, I'd like to close the public session.
Mayor, please.
Mr. Wyka came up before, and you know what?